Good evening, I'm going to call the December 6, 2017 zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order at 7:35 PM. Just to introduce the Board, I'm Casey Bailey, I'm the Chair. To my left is Kathy France, a member, to my right Jason Norman, a member, and Dan McDonald, a member. We are only four members at this point in time, even though we are a five-member Board. Just to let people know how our evening will go, we have an agenda with three public hearings. We'll call the public hearings in order and receive testimony from the applicant as to what they're proposing to do. The Board will ask the applicant questions, and then we will open up to the audience to speak in favor or against each proposal. And then we will deliberate and vote on each matter, or we expect to vote on each matter, that is. So that without any further delay, we'll take the first application, which is application 2017-10 for Heather Manuel Torres. If you want to come up and have a seat. Hello. And I'm just going to read the legal notice and to the record. The zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 6, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the main meeting room of Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass., under general laws, Chapter 48 as amended, for application 2017-10 made by Heather Manuel Torres, owners of the premises located at 8 Briscoe Road, Groveland, Platte 185, Lot 29, in the residential 2-zone, for a special permit for an accessory in-law apartment according to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including Section 7.1. Good evening.
Hi.
So, do you want to give us a rundown of what you're proposing?
Sure. So I'm Heather Torres, this is my husband Manuel, and then our contractor Brian Lynch. We would like to add an in-law apartment approximately just under 800 square feet for my mother to live in. Brian has the details, more specifics for it.
I assume you guys have the plot plan?
Yes.
For those that will either do approximately 20 by 28 square foot, uh, square building, attached on the right-hand side. It meets all zoning setbacks. Again, size of the building is 784 square feet, which falls under the 900 square foot limits of the current bylaw. So, the intent of the use is for Heather's mom to live in it. The structure, the existing structure is a one-and-a-half story cape. The addition will be a one-story, again attached to the right-hand side of the house. You know, it's not going to exceed any sight lines or anything that the existing house creates, you know, so I think it really meets the letter of the bylaw, as far as the intent, the size, the use. You know, it meets all zoning requirements, and of course, the building permit will ensure that it meets all code compliance.
Do you two live in the house, the main house?
Yes.
And plan to continue to live there?
Yes.
And is there, are you planning connection internally?
Yes.
Yeah, if you look at the, uh, the plot plan, you'll notice where there's that little dog-like connecting to the house, that'll be like a conjoined breezeway. Where as you head to the breezeway, off the driveway, you can either go right into the in-law or left into the existing home.
Any members of the Board have questions?
No, I did read through it pretty thoroughly already. I think, um, he's got a lot of information on the building permit, there's a lot of information, so I think I got all my questions answered.
Subject system? Uh, they're actually on Town Center. So, it will be, you know, front and front through the main house and go out on the main waistline.
And I assume the exterior siding will match?
Windows, siding, roofing materials, all the exterior trim details will match existing. All stirred in the driveway, so the parking situation remains the same.
And is there an off-street parking space for your mom? If any members of the Board have other questions, I'll open it up to the public. If there's anybody here to speak on behalf or in opposition of this application, please come up.
Rita Mari, an abutter called the town clerk the other day.
Um, hang on.
I just want to be known that, um, to go on record, that Rita Mari, one of the abutters, called the town clerk the other day and said that she is for them putting in the in-law apartment.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Any final questions from the Board?
No, meets all the dimensional requirements, correct?
Correct.
Setbacks?
Setbacks.
What else is there?
Nothing dry, right?
Seems like you got it right, too.
Absolutely.
Then I will close the public hearing and ask for a discussion or a motion from the Board.
That's my discussion.
Okay, yeah. Do you have a motion?
You met the requirements.
Yeah. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, grant the request for a in-law apartment, special permit, as it meets the current Groveland bylaws, zoning bylaws.
One second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now Julie's going to tell you.
All the legal.
Yeah, all the good stuff.
We have 14 days to file a decision with the town clerk, and then after this, a 20-day appeal period, and at that point in time, you will receive a letter from me with a copy of the decision. After the 20-day appeal, you need to go down to the town clerk, pick up your decision, bring it down to registry deeds, and have it, you know, sent out by then, and then bring it back to the town clerk. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Welcome. Good luck.
Okay, moving right along, we'll move on to application 2017-11 made by John and Grace Stokes. Yeah, sorry, we don't have an easel for you. Okay, I have to read. These microphones don't amplify into the room, they're just for the recording, so I'll try to speak up. If you can't hear me, just flag me down.
Feel free to move about to keep the cabin, right?
Okay. For the record, the legal notice, Town of Groveland, the zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 6, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the main meeting room of Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass., under general laws, Chapter 48 as amended. For application 2017-11 made by John and Grace Stokes, owners of the premises located at 92 Seven Star Road, Groveland, Platte 13, Lot 12, in the R2-zone, for a special permit for an accessory in-law apartment according to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including Section 7.1. So, if the applicant could present your application?
Good evening, my name is Peter Caruso, I'm Attorney of Austin and Orlando, and I represent John and Grace Stokes, in a special, just a permanent application for another in-law apartment. Been living in town for a long time, this is an in-law apartment that they're supposed to construct. The purpose of this is actually, as they get a little bit older, they would like to live in this apartment, in-law apartment, and they have proposed to sell the home to their child, to their son, and then they would move it to the in-law, but they'd have to build it first. So it does meet a 7.1 to the accessory apartments, it does meet the first 7.11 for the purposes of either special needs and housing of our parents. Number two, we want it to be quiet, they assume the only one dwelling unit with one in-law apartment, so it's not multi, not multi, it'll only be one home. The apartment size, which has been, the bylaw calls it 25% by 900 square feet, the area would actually be 751 square feet, and what I'd like to do is just to show the Board how we arrived at that determination, I have some calculations that I will give the Board. These were done by Al Vazio, who was a registered architect.
Thank you.
Who may be here tonight. And what this shows, this shows the calculation for the in-law apartment with the alatable square footage of 900 square feet. And what they've done is, what I was done is look the bylaw that he has taken, and I have a sketch here of what the addition would look like. And what I've done is in armage, I outlined what the structure would look like during the addition, and in yellow, and I have copies of the board, in yellow, the excluded area as proposed by the current Groveland zoning bylaw.
I'm sorry, where did you say the yellow was? Excuse me?
Yellow is, are the excluded areas.
Excluded area.
By the, by the definition, for the little area, what includes would be the living, the sleeping, the cooking purposes, and excludes the, you know, the laundry, the toilets, the bathrooms, the communicating corridors, the stairways, the closets, storage spaces, and then the porches. And that's all within the zoning bylaws. So what Al has done, the registered architect, is he has sketched out the area that's going to be built up, and I've done yellow what is going to be actually excluding. And if Al goes up with the calculations, they come to 751 square feet. Now, 751 would be less than the 900 square feet by the bylaw. These, the building does meet all of the setbacks and side-back setbacks, it's actually an addition to a house that's there now. And also to me, also to be performance with the area, what I'd like to do is to show you what the view is from the street, if you haven't really bought. This is the, this is where the house looks, right? And it's in back, that's where the addition is going to be. This is sort of a side view, it's looking off the side. All of the, all of the parking will be off-street, in the driveways, there's no on-street parking. It meets the setbacks, it's actually on the side, that's there on, if you can draw attention. And it does show the front view from the street, it's a single-family home, it doesn't shed out, in fact, does increase the value of the house. This particular house has the highest value on the, on the street, it reprints value by the, by the George Town assessors. But again, it doesn't, and this is a side view. So that's, that's a side view of the home also, that shows the street view, and also shows the driveway where the cars be parked. It does meet all of the requirements under 7.1 of the bylaw for the calculations, as well as the bylaw provisions. I'd like to just continue for just two more minutes on the, what I'd like to say is that it does meet as constructed, all the plans, and as submitted. The bylaw will not be converted, cannot be converted into a single-family home, it stays as a, as a single-family home. All the plans are submitted to the Board, will be in the performance, and they'll be, also, shall meet all the building codes, the master building codes, the local zoning codes, the bylaw laws, all the Board of Health, and all the in-law apartments, shall be returned back to a single-family residence in case of a change of ownership. As the Board knows, if there is a change of ownership, they would have to come back to the Board again to reapply for a special permit. In fact, if they do sell the home to their son, they're back to the Board. It's not going to change any configurations we've got here. Again, there'll be no on-street parking, all parking will be on the, on the driveway and on the property, and the occupants will in fact occupy the premises at all times. And the special permit, of course, is not admissible, they'd have to keep it, if they sell the home, they'd lose it, and they'll have to come before the Board on the same conditions. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I was having a little trouble understanding how, forgive me, I looked at this over the weekend, but, um, the, the, the main house will connect to what is now the second floor above the, what was the existing, and I'm just, I couldn't visualize it based on your drawings. Could you walk me through it? How, how it connects?
So it connects onto the back of the house. This is, this is pre-existing, this is pre-existing.
Is that the house or the garage?
It's the existing in-law apartment.
Okay. Okay, got it?
So it's going to attach to the back of the house.
Can I show you where it walks through?
Sure, yeah.
This is the, this is the garage, and this is the family room existing.
And that family room's above the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
This is going to be a walk-through to this.
Okay.
This is becoming storage for the main house.
Yep.
And it's going to be a wall off, the door, and then the in-law apartment will be here and here.
Okay. So the, that second story is above the walk-in closet? There will be part of the, okay.
Yes, yes, it is.
And that family room above your garage currently connects internally to your, to the main structure?
Yeah, that's our family room.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the Board?
My question was, you're on septic?
Yes, it's a five-bedroom septic.
Five-bedroom, okay, and so the existing structure has how many already?
It has three, and they're calling it four. We have an office that they call, the Town calls the bedroom, and there'll be one other bedroom in the in-law, which is five.
The structure has begun construction. We had a building permit, and gone through the boards, and actually had a zoning plan office, and then, well, we still before the Board on a special permit, so the house is, the addition is probably three-quarters constructive. What the building inspector and building department know, and the board of health?
And the Board of Health, too? You talked about the septic and all that.
Yes, it was designed, when I built the house, it was a three-bedroom home, and I had them design a five-bedroom system.
Do you have, Jason, any questions?
Excuse me, any questions?
Was that a no?
No.
Jason, you're good for?
What was the square footage of the existing?
Of the existing house?
The main house is probably around, I think around 3,000.
You said the main house is about?
The main house is 38 by 28, two stories.
Okay. 38 by 28, two stories?
And then, uh.
You do the math?
And it's 14 by 18, uh, entryway, and the TV room, the garage, is 30 by 24.
You lost, I.
And the TV room is 15 by 20, 15 by 30.
Yeah, hold on, maybe we should.
Yeah, I had those numbers, I didn't know you had any.
Well, we have all the ones for the, um.
We have the numbers for the in-law, but not, it's just.
Okay, so the main house, I'm sorry, did you say was 38 by what?
38 by 28.
And then you said the, I think the next one was the entryway?
Yeah, 14 by.
Are you asking?
The assessor has a quiet 439.
Yeah, just the overall, just the whole.
Assessors have it.
Does the white 439.
Yeah, I looked it up, but I didn't print it out and bring it with me, I knew I saw it, so, thank you.
But 770 of that was the old in-law. So you need to deduct that from 44.
So the new, the overall in-law space is still going to be significantly less than the overall house?
Oh, yeah. It's less than, it nets out less than 900 square feet.
Yeah?
Can we get another microphone? Would you mind grabbing a chair, over here?
Please report.
For the public to comment.
Okay.
Well, there's two right there.
There's two right there, right behind you.
The accessory size is 25% of the, you know, the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, so depending on what, might even be over 900, depending on what the total, the final, the existing building ends up at. But you're, you're close there anyway, so.
Yeah, but we're under 900.
We're under.
Yeah, no, I mean, you're, you're close to, you know, at least 900 for the existing dwelling, 25%, maybe even more, so.
We've worked, we've worked this with the registered architect over the past several months, and we've been in contact regularly with the building department and the Town to be sure that we meet all of the bylaw regulations.
Further questions from the Board?
You mean all the setbacks? I don't see a plot plan yet.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much.
You got a big one?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I got two, I'm sorry.
Yes. We've got 19 and a half feet.
As long as we're building with the setbacks.
You do?
Yes, we do.
You have a sign off on it?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to open it up to the public unless I hear objections from the Board.
No, it might bring up more questions, but, yeah.
So at this point, we'll take comments from the public. If you would come to the, to the table to, and state your name and address for the record, and tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
How was everyone?
Great.
My name is Attorney Rachel Jedkins. I'm on, here on behalf of many of the abutters, Ralph and Susan McNeil, who are of 97-Star Road, Daniel and Jane Donahue, who are also here, they're of 94 Seven Star Road, Paul Link, who's of 81 Seven Star Road, and also Chris and Nina Santa Sosa, who are of 85 Seven Star Road, and all of them are objecting to this plan. I understand that you were just walked through by counsel these bylaws, the zoning bylaws, and how the plan applies to it, and we'd like to do the exact opposite here. So the first thing that the abutters have issued to is the purpose of the building of this new in-law. This has been an in-law apartment that originally was planned back in 2003 for a set of in-laws of the applicants that never actually moved into the property. They've continued to use that for their grown children and their families, and it has been empty for some time. So as far as them having a need for this increased size to an in-law apartment, there, we've not heard of any recent plans for them to have anybody moving in there. Also, under the new bylaws for the Town of Groveland, this in-law apartment, excuse me, this applicant would have had to come in before you guys to get a special permit to continue to use that in-law apartment anyway pursuant to Section 7.1.5.4. As anybody who had an accessory in-law apartment, would have to come before the Board to see if they could continue use or make any alterations to it. The next issue is size. If you notice on your plans, I'm not sure if you have the original plans in here, but the original in-law that was built in, well, was permitted in 2003, built in 2006, was for 776 feet. They're now saying that they're building an additional structure, and now they have 751 square feet. Not sure how their numbers add up. What I'm seeing is that they're tending to use, in your definition section of your bylaws, what's called "living area." However, your bylaws specifically play out what is "habitable area," as required as accessory use. So in that, they're not allowed to back out the same amount of space that they do for the living area specifically, they're only allowed to back out, in those spreadsheets that he gave you, I do not have a copy of them in front of me, they're only able to back out unfinished basements, workshops, unfinished attic closets, and the garage space. It says nothing about water closets, hallways, stairwells, things of that nature. So I believe that 7.1.3 regarding size should not allow them to make those, those items backed out, and that would significantly increase the size of this unit. Thank you so much. So when referring directly to the bylaws, the only thing that they would be able to back out here under this minimus would be the closet, which is eight and a half, excuse me, eight square feet, the, excuse me, walk-in closet, 42 square feet. They couldn't back out the bath, they can't back out the laundry, they can't back out the hallway, the stairs, the foyer, the steps, the stairs to the basement, and then another 29 square feet. So really, they're only able to back out 30, 70, about 80 square feet of their 1,051. So they're still above the 900 square feet in your bylaws. You referenced the square footage of their home is 4,000 by the assessors, I do believe that the assessors' office is including the 776 square feet of the accessory apartment in that 4,439 square feet. So I would ask you to look into that, as far as what square footage they're allowed to have for an accessory apartment. I'm not sure if the Board is, is aware, I'm sure that you are since we did file suit, but that this structure is actually substantially built. Mr. Stokes was served with a lawsuit in September. He was issued a cease and desist order except for buttoning up the unit, excuse me, and this, when I'm talking about the unit, I'm talking about the new unit that he has planned to build, or has built. And he has buttoned up that unit, put on windows, put on doors, put on a roof, we agreed to additional collar ties, but then also outside of that, that cease and desist, he has made repairs at his own whim against this order, knowing very well that you guys might not agree to this tonight. But he didn't care, he continued that work anyway. He's also made substantial alterations to his existing in-law apartment. There's consistently people working there during weekdays and weekends, Baldini Plumbing's been there at least three times, he's put in all new windows in the existing in-law, he's put in all new siding, he took off the roof, put on a new roof, all from September 15th to today. So we ask you that you don't consider any of that as a reason why you would allow him to continue this structure, because he was well aware, at the time that he was served, that he did not have the required permits in order to make this, to build this structure. I want to refer you to a picture of his unit, of his home, from an angle that they were not providing to you, and I apologize for having to go through these, but there's just so many. From the data, hold on, thank you so much, I have one from the data he was served. Or do I know? There they are. This is a. This is a picture of what it wa, looked like the day that he was served with his lawsuit. The roof was not finished, the walls were not out, the windows are not done. You can pass those down if you like. This is what it looks like today. With the cease and desist order in place. Obviously, we do not have pictures of the interior of the unit, but we can just attest to the fact that all of the neighbors have agreed that there's substantial work being completed inside the units.
Excuse me, uh, do you have a copy of the cease and desist?
That was on September nineteenth, that he was not to do any further work except for buttoning up the, the new project.
Until what? He appeared before us?
Until, until he got the special permit. So according to his old permit for this...
So, 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 so they're here today, uh, counselor, to try to cure?
Yes.
Yes. Trying to cure. They're trying to get a special permit after the fact.
To, to come into compliance. Is that your position, sir?
Yes.
Madam Chair, mind if I ask some question?
Uh, to, yes.
Well, I just want to know what your position is because what happened before, if there's non-compliance?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and there's a cease and desist to stop any further non-compliance?
Uh-huh.
And if that's, they're before us to cure, then if they, if they meet the requirements of the in-law apartment, then they proceed with a, a fresh start on that, is that, is that not true?
No, that's true, and I just wanted, the reason for presenting this is because I think there's a clear frame of mind.
Cause, cause...
There's a clear frame of mind of when he started this job, he didn't have the appropriate permits. His, his special permit for his prior, prior, um, accessory in-law was very clear. He could not have any alterations, any changes, without going back to this board. Um, so he was making substantial alterations without going to the special permit. Also, if you look at the back of his original building permit, and Anne Brody can tell you this, it did say, "You need to go before the zoning board." Uh, Sam Jocelyn was actually at court with us that day and came in and told us that Mr. Stokes did need to go before the zoning board, and that's why we came to this agreement. So you should also speak with Sam Jocelyn, and that's why we are here today.
Okay, so, so other than your, um, dimensional, um, it's your position that they exceed the nine hundred square feet of the twenty-five percent?
Absolutely.
Uh, bylaws standard?
Absolutely.
That's, 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 that's your one and only issue?
No, absolutely not. That's, that's step one. Okay, so step number, so that, this right here is a picture of the, of the in-law apartments, okay? This is the front of the house. This right here, they're saying is for cold storage. Currently, this is the bedroom. Carpeted, heated, insulated, drywall, ceiling. They're going to shut that down and not use it anymore? Seems highly unlikely. If it's going to go forward, there has to be some type of condition that there's going to be an annual inspection, because as of last night, there's lights on. They're using it. There's also here, they, they represented that there was a breezeway that connected this structure to the, uh, the original home. There isn't. There's a, there's a walkway in between. There's actually no egress from the current in-law apartment to the main structure. There's no door going into that garage. So as of right now, the only way that somebody accesses their current in-law apartment is through an exterior door which faces the McNeil's home. They come around the side of the house, okay? So this right here is used as a bedroom, and this was the main living space. This original, this original piece is twenty-two feet. So we're at the back of their home. Might be easier if we go this way. We're actually going to flip it so we can start. Just don't mind the words being said. Right now, this is the back of the home. This is a walk-in closet.
The garage.
Yeah, sorry, yes, this is the back of the garage. It's not the home. The home is, this is the deck of the home, and it's over here, okay? This is a walk-in closet for me. This is not connecting it to the main home. This is clearly not connecting it to the garage. Then we have a bedroom, okay? That's twenty-two feet. This is the proposed addition, an additional twenty-six feet.
Built addition.
The new, yes, the built addition. Between these two structures, it's forty-eight feet. How long did Mr. Stokes say that his original house was? Thirty-eight feet? It's ten feet longer than his home. This looks like a two-family home when you look at it from a different angle, and I'll show you the pictures in another minute. That's where I was getting to. Then they have a, a walkout basement, which has a cold structure, another structure in the back of it, and ten additional feet from screen porch. So off the back of the house, not including, including this walk-in closet space, which again is another sixty feet, so it's twenty-two, twenty-six, that's forty-eight feet, fifty-eight feet plus six. So it's sixty-four feet straight out the back of this house along these property lines, and this is all that they see on both sides. So at this point, they're providing, they're going to make that top cold storage, and that's how they're getting rid of that square footage. Um, the other issue, um, is the single family characteristics. This here is what the neighbors see. This looks like an entirely new house. The bylaw clearly says, it does not say you can't convert it to a two-family home. It says that the in-law apartment has to make, or, excuse me, the, the home has to maintain its single family charact, is this characteristics? That's section seven point one five. Okay, so the accessory apartment shall not change the single family characteristic of the dwelling except for the provision of one additional egress. One and additional egress. This property has four egress, excuse me. This walk, I thought the walk-in closet was a door, and it's not, so I, I apologize. There's three egresses alone to this, to this property. They have a vestibule and a porch off the back now, which goes toward the McNeil's home. They now have a door in the front here that goes down into the backyard, and they have a full-size basement and walkout closet, I mean, walkout basement from here with a vestibule. And again, they have doors and those as well. So there's only supposed to be one egress, and now they have three.
Can I pause you for just a second?
Yeah, of course.
Did, did you want to respond to something that she said earlier? Okay, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to jump in. Okay.
So this in-law has two separate, complete, different foundations, complete separate foundations from the original home. The basement's separate and complete from the home. They've had ample time to come in for a permit to do this, but they knew that these butters were going to be upset about this. Originally, the plan was presented to their butters by both, uh, it seems that Mr. Stokes had had an original plan that maybe didn't go forward, that he was going to do in addition to this, this in-law apartment by making a sloped roof off the original structure towards his backyard so that it wouldn't come out into the yard any further, and that neither neighbor would, would have any different view than they currently do. That obviously is not the case of the plans that were before the board. Um, one other issue is that, um, with this property, this property already has a variance for frontage. You need a hundred and fifty feet for frontage, um, in order for a single-family home. They do not require, have that. They received a variance previously. And with this property looking as a, a two-family home, we're not sure that they have, have enough frontage for that. There's actually a neighbor, uh, which one of the butters has a photo of. John, you have that? This is the neighbor of the Donahues. That's their two-family home. They had to have two hundred square feet of frontage for this structure. This is what two-family homes look like in our town. So we're just, we're asking the, uh, the board to consider that, that this is not simply an in-law apartment. This is a, a completely, completely new building that, um, he could have done this the right way. He's been through this process before. His permit, if you look at the prior permit, was extremely clear that he was supposed to come before the board for any alterations to his current, uh, in-law apartment. And he failed to do so, even though he knew he should have. Uh, he, he's expecting you guys to make the decision in his favor today. Um, and that is why he has gone out on a limb and made all the improvements that he has since the cease and desist order were actually issued. I can also say that against his permit, he is also making, um, significant repairs to the, um, current in-law apartment, which we believe he should come, should have had to come to before the board in order to get permission to do anyway. If you guys would like some photos, some more photos. This is just the vestibule in the back for the walkout basement. This is a side view from the garage showing the first addition. This is the second addition, now going and putting a porch and that third egress up. Again, this is, this is a view of just the house, and what's, what's important here is that these neighbors used to be able to, so the McNeils and the Donahues are on both sides of this, uh, property. They used to be able to see each other's yards. They can no longer do that. I was looking for one. And this one here, it's kind of hard to see, but if you look in between here, this is the main house. This is the first addition. This is the second being built. You can see here, there's a small roof. That's, that's the walkway, but there's no connection. They're butting each other. There's no connection between these two properties.
But if, can you just go back a little? When you say there's no connection, you mean between the living space of the existing apartment and the living space of the main dwelling?
Correct. It butts to the garage. There's no doors. There's never been any doors created. There's never been a connection. There's not a door for access.
Okay, but they do, they are...
Yes.
Connected in the physical sense of a building.
Concrete touches concrete, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so on behalf of the butters, um, we'd just like to ask that you guys consider denying this, um, as this should have done, should have been done properly, that it looks like a two-family home, um, that it does not, uh, uh, go in line with, uh, section seven of your bylaws, of your new amended bylaws, um, and that, that we accept the cease and desist on the construction continuing.
Um, before you go, I just want to make, see if any board members have questions for, for counsel here. If you want to wait and, and ask later, that's fine, too.
Well, I'd like to give, you know, attorney here a rebuttal on everything you've heard. I mean, it was a...
Thank you.
Quite, quite involved, so, um, you know, I've looked at this as a handwritten, uh, cease and desist. It says to, um, do you agree with this, that this was, this is a official document?
Oh, yes. It really wanted a cease and desist. It was an audit to continue work.
Okay.
And, and if you read it, that's what it says.
Right, it says, um, if you don't mind me, um, order the defendants, John, uh, and, uh, Grace Stokes, are hereby ordered to discontinue any work to the interior of the addition to the existing in-law apartment pending application by the Stokes for a special permit before the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA, for the approval of an in-law apartment and the granting of said permit by the ZBA, comma, or an order of the ZBA authorizing an abandonment of the in-law apartment used by the Stokes. You're here for the special permit. You're not here to abandon the, uh...
That's correct.
Can you clarify that? Cause they gave an or here.
Yes.
Option.
Oh, no, we're not going to abandon it because we're here to have it go forward.
Okay.
And, and by all means.
But the court commented on that for some reason.
Oh, well, we want to abandon it.
Correct. So...
An order of the ZBA authorizing an abandonment of the in-law, so we have, you would have to authorize an abandonment of this project.
Okay.
Okay.
The court's in order.
And then two, "Any work performed by the defendant shall be limited to the work to the exterior of the existing addition for the purposes of creating a, quote, uh, weather-tight, unquote, shell, including roofing, siding, windows, and doors for the purpose of the preservation of the addition from elements of the weather," period. And that was the end of it, signed by the...
Assembly judge.
Uh, honorable, uh, Wall?
Judge Wall, Joshua.
Okay, for the record. So what work was done after this?
The work that was done afterwards complies with the order. Now, it was not, it was not a restraint order. It was an order to actually go forward and weatherproof what was there. And everyone agreed, the judge signed, that it would include roofing, it would include siding, it would include windows, it would include doors. So the work that was done was not done against the order. It was done to preserve the order. And, and really, you know, it bothers me a lot.
So it's unfinished on the inside?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
No, it's not. And part of it on the outside is unfinished, because it couldn't go on, on the...
It's rough studs, no sheet rock. It's...
Baldini Plumbing was at my house to fix the boiler on the main house.
So, so it was, it was, it was brought to be weather-tight, keep the water out, the water out.
It's still not weather-tight. The gable end, I was not allowed to finish with, uh, siding because I can't finish the three-season room. And I can't put the siding on until I get the roof on, on the three-season room. An ice and water shield from the roof to the gable end. So that's still, just get tied back on.
Okay.
And it bothers me to say that he, he's floated and he hasn't complied with the town. I can tell you that it's just the opposite. Mr. Stokes has crossed every T and dotted every I. He started back in the spring.
He didn't get a permit.
Sir, excuse me. It's not your turn yet. Please be quiet so we can hear...
He started in the springtime. He went to the town. He went to the building department. He went to conservation, and he went to zoning. So what he got was an approval from conservation, okay? He has a building permit, and he has a zoning board permit to, to, to structure the house. We have a permit from the zoning board to build this addition. It was signed off...
Clarification.
It was signed off by the town. So what he did was, this is a building. Uh, so what he did was, he constructed it. The building department knew about it. The zoning knew about it. Conservation knew about it, and zoning knew about it. Now, the neighbors complained. The neighbors complained that they didn't like it, so they, they complained to the town. So Sam came along. I spoke to him. He says, "Everything's fine." And they looked at him, and he says, "Well, you know, now that I speak to..." And we, we spoke to Sam in July and August. And so we thought everything was fine. I have to tell you that it was the day of the court hearing that Sam came to the courthouse. It was an attorney crew, so I have to tell you, after speaking with town council, the town lawyer, not with boards, that you're going to have to go before the, the zoning board for a special permit. That was the very first time on that court date that I had heard it, the very first time that, that Sam had told me because he had just learned it the day before. But we had gone to all of the town boards in, in May, in April, May, June, July. Everyone knew this was being constructed. We have sign-offs. Now, when you talk about seeing from, from the side, this is the view from the side. You can't see it from the left-hand side. These trees are huge. And I say, "Well, maybe you can if you look closer." Okay, you can't, because if you look through the... This is what you see from, from the neighbors. You can't see it.
Is that from inside the Stokes' house looking to the neighbors? Is that...
Yes.
Yep.
That's from the bedroom.
Up top.
This is the second floor.
And these are the, these are the...
Family home.
Side.
Excuse, excuse me, counsel. Do you have, uh, plans that went with us by chance?
They were filed with, with the building.
The building inspector has.
Yeah, they're filed with the town.
We got a permit, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a permit to build.
Includes excavation and foundation.
Yes, he was not, you know, he'd been in town for so long.
Can I stop you for a second? Cause it said existing and to alter existing in-law apartment.
Yes.
So...
But you wanted the plans.
I, I... Do you take the position that it would, was it a legal in-law apartment or, or wasn't? Was it in compliance as an in-law apartment?
Oh, yes.
It was a...
We, we already had CBA approval in two thousand and three.
They had a CFO and everything else. The old in-law apartment...
Was approved.
Had a special permit.
Okay, so it wasn't an illegal in-law apartment?
No, 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 no. That's why, yeah, hey, John comes to me.
Procedurally, I'm trying to pick, cause we don't have the full file here, right? And I'll do, I'll do respect, so I don't know what the plans were that went with the foundation and the addition, but it said existing in-law apartment. So factually, is that correct? It was an existing, uh, in-law apartment that, that was, it had legal status, and it was properly permitted?
Yes, it was.
And they were going to build out, and before they built out, they went before the boards. They went before every single board in town. And they got approvals from every single board in town. Okay, that's what it goes, so you have to understand that.
Can I, can I stop you?
And also, the house owner is using this plan, which is, uh, a, a, a write-up, which is signed and stamped by a registered architect. So he certified this plan. He certified that it complies with all the town bylaws and regulations. I do not see another plan here to, to oppose that plan. And if they have another plan that's going to say that that plan is wrong, then, you know, I like to see it. And I, and I like to see those calculations stamped by a registered architect. So, yeah. It's not a two-family home. It's a single-family home that has an in-law, which is absolutely acceptable as an accessory use at the, at the town of Groveland. So the two-family home is not a two-family home.
So there's no intention to rent that out to, or to have it occupied by, uh, uh, under the definition, uh, unrelated family members?
Absolutely not. And we welcome, and, and John said, we, we welcome an annual inspection. You know, Sam's been over there so many times, that should be... If I go further, we, we welcome twice a year that, you know, the, the building department's going to come up to make sure a couple of things. That the council has said that possibly they're going to use the top as an additional bedroom. No, they're not going to use the top as an additional bedroom. Have the building inspector come and say to the guy, "No, the building department's there at all." Because it is true. That, that is pure speculation. And you cannot speculate what this means. If it's a violation, and the building, and the building department finds that it's a violation, then find that it is, but it's not. The registered architect has said that it's going to be stored. He's used the calculations, and I, I see no, nothing to, 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 to view what, what we've said. And again, the order is, the order speaks for itself.
Second story connected to the, anything?
No.
Yes.
Never will be.
Well, there's got to be some way to get to that storage.
This is what they were showing before.
And it can't be built now, it's the wintertime, that's going to be built in the spring, before.
Can I say something?
It's not your turn yet. We'll, we'll hear more comment from the butters.
Where's the access, John, to the storage space?
It's, you go up a set of stairs, from inside the in-law, you're going to have to go through a door and go upstairs to go into that.
But you have to go into the in-law first.
From the outside.
No, you're going to go through the main house, and go through the second floor, and into that, that's going to the main house.
So, there's no.
The windows have been changed, so it can't be used for bedrooms. The windows don't meet the code, I did that intentionally. The windows have been replaced, and they're too small to be used for egress.
It's not a heated space?
No, there is no heat.
The rug is out, it's unheated, it's plywood floors.
There was never any heat up there.
Sheet rock, you have electrical outlet, what's up there?
It is sheet rock, and it has, because it was a bedroom. But I mean, you can't use it as a bedroom, the windows are not cold. They're brand-new windows, I bought them, too small.
They're not egress windows.
They can't be used as egress, they're too, they don't meet the requirement. I did that intentionally, after I talked with Sam.
Just to clarify for Jason, I think he was not clear.
Sound like an attic, I mean.
Dan, Dan, please, just a second. That the, the connection between the existing home and the second floor of the existing old in-law is not, not built yet, but will be built.
I lost the weather, I'm not going to build now.
Dan, go ahead.
Is, is that cold storage like this?
Yeah.
It's not straight walls, and then?
Gambrel, it's, no, it's straight walls and a gambrel, roof on top. The, the only people that ever lived in that apartment were my children. I built the original in-law for my daughter and my future son-in-law when they got engaged. I said, "If you want to live here and save some money, I'm going to build an in-law." And that's what I did. And then, my son used it, and three out of the four kids used it. And when they all bought a home, I left it vacant, it's been vacant. I could have rented it plenty of times, I didn't. It's an in-law apartment.
What's it, what's it look like from the front of the house?
The photo that I showed you.
The only people that ever lived there were my family.
Well, that's, that's the side view. Do you have any of that from, from the street?
Yeah, that's the front.
Oh, that's the, but it doesn't show that, that doesn't give me any panoramic, anything.
That's the driveway.
It seems like it goes back.
Yes.
So, driving by from the street, it, does it look like, does it look like a duplex?
You can't see it.
Does it look like two townhouses side by side?
You can see it driving by, coming one way, you can see the tail end of it.
From the front, you can't see.
Coming from Georgetown on Seventh Street, you can see the tail end of it.
I mean, does it change the character of the neighborhood if you can't see it from the front? I mean, that's what I'm asking, I mean, is it?
Hang on. Hang on, please, just hold on.
Please.
Do you have any more rebuttal to the attorney's comments?
I do not.
Okay, so, we'll take further abutter comments, and we will, I'm sure, have more questions for you. Did you have any follow-up?
Yes, I just want to address, Mr. McDonald was asking about procedurally. So, procedurally, this original structure, that first 22-by-20 unit, was an permitted in-law apartment.
Legal status as an in-law apartment?
Legal status of an in-law apartment, and it existed for years.
So, now, it's a modification of that, so it comes.
Dan, can I please?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. They needed to seek a special permit under their permit from 2003. Number four, this is not legal lease. I know Mr. Jocelyn, he's a very smart man, this is not something you would need town council for. All submitted plans will become part of this agreement, any deviation or changes from said plans will require additional Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals hearing relative to proposed changes prior to commencement of said changes. Number four, they did not do this, okay? They, they did not do this. They went to CONCOM, they applied, they sent out notices to a butters for a hearing, the butter came to the hearing, was told by Aunt Brody that there's not going to be a hearing. A decision was made without there being a hearing. We don't know why that is, okay? Never came before the zoning board. Violation of this special permit for not getting approval to make any additions. He now has a 22-by-26 additional foundation, additional two floors, full walkout basement, okay? He made changes to the structure, he's telling us now that he changed his bedroom on the top floor of the second story from a functioning bedroom, now has no heating, no carpet. These people have been into his home and seen this in-law apartment. The bottom floor was a fully functional kitchen and living room. It's now being converted, without permits, into, excuse me, a laundry room, bedroom, and a bathroom, so it's going to significantly change what that bottom is. So, we can't think of these as two separate projects, it's either it's permitted as one accessory in-law apartment, or it's not. We can't think of the second addition as a new accessory in-law, and just permanent for that, because it's an addition to an existing in-law. Okay? So, it's either he's violating his special permit, or it's, or he's going to have to abandon the use of it. We're, we're discussing this as if we're only looking to permit this one extra part of the building, and that is not the case. You have to, you have to take both parcels into consideration, the three egresses, the fact that it's two separate additional foundations in addition to the house. If you look at your bylaws, I think it's extremely clear that it's not about turning this into a two-family, or whether they're going to rent it to somebody else. It is that the characteristic of the dwelling, except for the provision of, the accessory apartment shall not change the single-family characteristic of the dwelling, except for the provision of, and additional egress. This one has three, has a porch, screen and porch, has a deck off the back, is going to have a deck off the other side, okay? This looks, and it does not have any connections to the main unit. This is being used as a two-family home.
Who's in there?
Nobody. That's the, that's the first thing, where, where, where's the need?
Well, if it's being used as a two-family home, who's the second family?
Any of his four children that are married with children.
Seems like blood relatives under the definition, isn't that what it's for?
Dan, we can argue back and forth, it's just, what's the, what's the, what's the purpose of the need for this extension, you know? That's an application, that's the first page of an application, that's not a decision.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would also.
Okay, so, this is stamped by the town and the zoning board, this was the application.
But there was never a hearing.
I want to ask you about this, because it is stamped by town clerk. I know this didn't come before us as a board, and it may predate my time as chair, so I don't really know what happened with this.
The, because there was a special permit, we made an application, we sent it in. And the board, because there was a special permit, they said, "You don't need to have another special permit, you can act under this." Now, before everybody lights up and goes crazy, the special permit that we were granted for the first in-law apartment was supposed to be in our possession. We didn't have it, we looked all over. I went to Sam Jocelyn and said, "I can't find it." And we found it in our folder under 92-7 Star Road, Pat Skana had it in our folder, and we didn't find that until April. Sam couldn't believe it. It was.
So, it never got recorded?
It never got recorded. So, I, when I got it, I recorded.
Okay.
Well, we did pay the $350 to.
And did, was there something in writing back from somebody?
There was a slip of paper somewhere, where is it?
You don't want to hear that, but.
What we were given.
We were sent back our application, as well as our check.
Okay.
And we were, it just said that we didn't have to go in front of the board again.
Okay. Okay, I mean, since it's part of what you've given me, I think I should read it. It's just a note saying, "Mr. Stokes, here's your application information and check, I'm so happy everything worked out for you. Take care, Julie, ZBA clerk." Okay.
So, we tried.
I see, okay. And I'll hold on to that, if you don't mind, for now.
There's only, there's only one other thing.
Sure.
Comments about the breakdown that you guys had from Alfred Di Basio. I'm not sure of the date of those, those plans, but he submitted an affidavit here in, you know, for the court proceedings, where he puts the in-law apartment, which is contemplated to be within the building addition, will comply with the town Groveland zoning requirements, which requires 900 square feet. He doesn't testify to anything, and that's what that breakdown was attached to in his court pleadings. So, his testimony here is that the addition complies with the necessary 900 square feet requirement, not the original in-law.
No, that's not true, that's not true, that's the whole plan.
He has the existing and the proposed, both on there.
So, it'll be more like one floor opening?
I mean, here, he, he lays out the proposed.
And the existing.
His exterior walls, and then the proposed being a foyer, kitchen, steps, stairs, and closets.
Okay, but do you just, do you, I mean, from what, what has been submitted with our application, which you got a piece of, it's not signed as an affidavit, but are you saying that the numbers that he's provided here are different than the numbers he's providing?
No, the numbers are not different, the numbers are just providing that his opinion that this is within the town of Groveland zoning bylaws has to do with the addition only, not the original in-law.
And when you say the addition, do you mean?
It's the new building he built this year.
Okay.
The 22-by-26.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I would like to hear from other abutters, if you can.
Yep.
I'm John McNeil, I live at 97-Star Road. As you look at the Stokes residence, I'm to the left of their house. Those bushes that you pointed out earlier, I planted, I had to have planted. When Stokes put the original addition on the house, he asked us about it, said what he was going to do, we agreed, said, "At your house, do what you have to do." We had no idea what he was going to put up. We weren't counting on a two-story gambrel going in the back of his house. He put it up, we had nothing but windows looking at us, we printed the arbor bythes, they were five to seven feet high, now they're about 20 feet high. It's a wall we had to create to block out what basically is an eyesore. Chris, who's sitting behind me, lives across the street, said, "I moved out here from Everett to get away from this, and this guy's putting up a tenement." So, that's what we have in the neighborhood, that's how it changed the characteristic of the neighborhood. The Donahues are on the other side, nothing's blocking their view, nothing, they have to look at that for the rest of their lives. What they want to do is add on to that eyesore, put another extension on the back of it. It's ugly, it's going to take away from our property values, it's going to take away from the Donahue's property values, and that's how it affects the neighborhood. If you look at the house, it looks like a two-family house. If you don't believe me, ask Sam Jocelyn, because the first time I came to talk to Sam about this, Sam said to me, "I agree with you, that looks like a two-family house, but it does not meet the definition of a two-family house by the town bylaws. But I agree, it looks like a two-family house." So, if it looks like a two-family house, it's not maintaining the characteristics of a one-family house. As far as adjoining something to the second floor, I don't know how he's going to adjoint something to a pitched roof from a gambrel, but I do know, when he put the original addition on, there was two closets up against the wall, and this was, whatever, it was 2006, I think it is, 11 years ago. He told me that's where the door is going to go to connect the house, the house to the main house. The door's never gone in. I don't know what's going to connect the house. I don't believe him when he says it. John's a good old boy from town, he's used to doing things the Groveland way. Right now, what you're suggesting is that he be rewarded for doing bad things. Never got a permit, never told us what he was doing, never went to either of us or the Donahues, knew that we would come before the board and object to it. So, now, he's gone and done this. He was told on the 14th of September, we took a lawsuit out, we were going to court. He went full bore all weekend. His crew was in there, Saturday all day working, Sunday all day working, Monday working, and at 7:30 Monday night, Paul Link, who could not be here tonight, but has signed on to this and is objecting to it, called the Groveland police, because at 7:30 at night, he was still working on his, on the in-law apartment addition out back. He good had done the right thing. He could have sat back, and he could have said, "All right, they're going to court, this is a problem in the neighborhood, let me take care of it." He didn't. He escalated it. And why did he escalate it? Because he knew that he's going to come before this board, and it's going to be good old Groveland again. He wants you people to do the wrong thing. He should be rewarded, and we should be punished for not doing the right thing. Again, we admire our attorney, Attorney Judkins, she argued all the legal points. What I'm saying is, I don't believe him when he says stuff, I've been around him, he removed, I had a surveyor stake at the end of our property, it's gone, it was removed. He tried to take six feet of my land when he was originally building on it, and when I confronted him on it, and I said, "I think you're on my land," he denied it, we measured it off, there was an overlapping, if you measure from one side, I was right, when you measure from the other side, he was right. We agreed, nothing's going to happen, it's no man's land, we'll leave it there. Next thing I know, there's a tree going up, there's a sprinkler head going in, I had a surveyor come in, I had to have the land surveyed to find out that I was in fact right. Nonetheless, the surveyor stake was still gone, which I believe is a crime. So, he built the house over that he's living in now, he built an addition on to his old house over on Parker Road, which I believe he needed a variance to sell, because that didn't meet code. He built an addition on his daughter's house on Holly Lane, he built the addition on to this house. He knows the building code, he knows the building laws, he can read a building permit. I'm not a builder. I had no idea what cold storage was, until I walked into Sam Jocelyn's office, and Sam told me, "You will not see this addition." And he did not have any kind of plans that you have in front of you now. Sam only had the existing house with the existing in-law apartment, and he brought that up, and he said, "He's going to come down off the roof, salt bar style, the second floor is going to be cold storage, you won't see it." I said, "Well, how does that, you know, how does that happen? What are my options?" He said, "You have none." You have no options, he's getting a building permit, doesn't have to go before the zoning board. Sam told me, I sent it before the zoning board, they sent it back and said that he did not need a variance. I've seen no record that it went to the zoning board. I asked for the plans, and Sam was very cooperative, he gave me the plans that he had, once he got the new plans, I said, "Where are the plans that went to the zoning board his first time around? I can't find those, we don't have them. Where are they? Is there any zoning board memo that says he was here to apply, that anybody came over and he was sent back? Nobody's seen them."
You mean in '03, or just this year?
No, with this one, with this one. And I lend some credence to what Sam says, when he talks about the house coming down, excuse me, because when I went to my other neighbor on the other side of me, Jerry Hill, and to explain to him what's going on in the neighborhood, Jerry said to me, "That's what he was talking about." I said, "What do you mean? I have a tree that's leaning over, not looking good." Jerry said, "He was talking about it coming down on his house." And I couldn't figure out how was that tree going to come down on his house, if it was going to slant over towards the Donahues. It's not going to slant over towards the Donahues, it's going straight out back. And when I asked him, in the parking lot of this building, the day that I went to see Sam, "John, are you building out back to where those flags are in your backyard?" "Oh, nobody, I'm not, that's for conservation, that's where it's going to go." Well, guess where his building ended up?
That's not true.
Guess where his building ended up? With, just about where the flags are. Again, my objection, if you'd done this the right way, if you'd come to us when he first started planning this, like he did the first time, when he put the first addition on and said, "I'm going to do this," I would have been honest with him, as I was in the parking lot, when I said, "I'm going inside to voice my objections with the building inspector." Had he done that, I would have come before this board to voice my objections, as would everybody else who's sitting here now. Four of the eight or nine people in the neighborhood are represented by Ms. Judkins. But he didn't do that. He told Jerry, he did not tell us, he did not tell the Donahues, we're his direct abutters, why not? Because he would have stood in his way. He's counting on you folks being Groveland, not doing the right thing, that's, why else That's, why else would he go full bore building this when he was, when he was told, "There's a court action against you"? Why else would he rip the roof off of an existing building that's only 10 years old, rip the siding off of that building and put new siding on if he wasn't confident that he was gonna be able to come in here and get his way once again in Groveland? So my objection is, the building is an eyesore. I don't think anything was done right. I don't believe he's gonna tie the second floor into the main house. I don't see how he can do it. He told me he was gonna do it on the original building, it hasn't been done yet. And it will affect my property values as well as the Donahues.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan McNeil from 97 Star Road. My objection, obviously, we all object to the same things, but I take particular objection to the comment that, "How does this change the, you know, oh, from the street it doesn't change the neighborhood." There's, you can see multiple roof lines and I am the neighborhood, the Donahues are the neighborhood. To suggest that I can't see three different roofs, actually four, from my house, it is ridiculous. And this is to keep the integrity of the neighborhood. I look at this every day. I come up on my, my back deck, it's, I come up on my back deck to go into my house.
View from the second floor.
Main house, the family room that was, that was put onto a garage over that, the addition which sticks up higher than, than the garage in front of it, and then the roof line in the back. You see them all from my, from my house. So it does in fact change the integrity of this house. This does not look like a, a single-family home. There's no single-family home that I can think of in Groveland that goes however, 38 feet across and 58 feet back, connected by a breezeway that doesn't actually connect. It abuts, but it does not connect. And the other, the other thing is, and the implication was that, and they've abided by all the rules. We had called Sam Jocelyn, I know other neighbors did as well, but my understanding is Sam Jocelyn went there on one occasion that we called because we were suggesting, "Now there's porches going on." And the, you don't, you don't wanna call it a cease and desist. It says, "Stop the work on, on the project, except to button it up for the winter." Sam Jocelyn posted a cease and desist, we were told, on the outside porch because that porch was not supposed to be constructed. It wasn't there, it is not something that needed to be winterized, yet the project continued. So all the rules were not followed. And the, the main issue is, when you're driving from Georgetown, you see this addition out back. When you're standing in my yard, you see this addition out back. When you're standing at Chris's house, you see multiple roof lines. This no longer looks like a single-family home. It, it certainly is the largest in-law apartment I've ever seen. It's bigger than, longer than, has more linear footage than the house itself. So if this board can justify how something with more linear footage is an accessory apartment, I, I don't understand why, you know, we're not having Ferris wheels in the backyard. This, it, it does not look like a single-family home. It has, it, this addition solidifies that it, it does not maintain the characteristic of a single, single-family home. Sam Jocelyn agreed that it does not look like a single-family home and, you know, here we are. That, I just think that it is, it is impacting us every day and impacting the Donahues even more. They have a broad view of multiple foundations and multiple structures in the backyard.
Thank you.
Could state your name and...
Yeah. My name is Dan Donahue and I live at 94 Seventh Star Road. So I'm the abutter to the Stokes on the east side of their house. McNeils are on the west side of the house. I had provided a couple pictures here. I wanted, I wanted to use them to make my point.
I think some of them ended up down there.
And there was another on the show, my neighbor's house, the other, the other two family.
Oh, is it under here maybe? I remember seeing it, but I...
Did your attorney have them?
Yeah, I thought she had it, yeah.
She had. She had it. So, a couple points on what I heard earlier. So I thought I heard tonight somebody say 751 square feet. Well, this special permit for the original in-law apartment was granted at 776 square feet. So now they're talking about 751 square feet. So we're talking about over 1,500 square feet of living space in this property. So I don't think 751 is an accurate representation of the in-law apartment. The other thing I wanna say is that we heard that the, the stockwerco order was issued in September and, and the intent was to button it up, make it weather tight. This is a picture from October, you know, October 15. That's buttoned up and weather tight. Windows in, roof on, raft, okay? This is a picture from November 24, okay? All siding on. New windows, all new windows on the old in-law apartment. New door, new entryway on the old in-law apartment. So to say that everything was done according to the rules is not true. I've lived in this town for 27 years and, you know, talking to my wife tonight when I came out here, what I said is, "The thing I'm most disappointed about is that I have to go through this. Like, why do I have to come down here and talk about this stuff? We don't like this stuff. And the only thing I can go by are your zoning laws, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about here. That's how these buildings are supposed to be built." It says that you can build an accessory apartment within single-family property. It's not within the single-family property. It's completely external, two completely independent living quarters. They're not, it's not a typical in-law apartment. We all know what that is. This is a separate, individual, independent living quarter. Do we have the other two family?
I think, we, we saw that picture, but if you could keep going.
I know, but it's, I wanna make my point. Paying my taxes for 27 years, building my house, raising my kids here. So this is what I'm sandwiched in between right now. Two, two-family houses. And I live in Groveland. I have an acre of land, I built a custom home. Why do I have to have two, two families on either side? This family had to get 200 feet of frontage to build their home. Okay, that's fine. Here, you're allowing him to build, he has built a two-family house on a single-family lot. Why is that allowed? Is that allowed on zoning laws? I don't think so. You have to have 200 feet of frontage. If I go staying in your zoning bylaws, preservation of a single-family characteristics, is that a single-family home? Anybody who looks at that knows it's not a single-family home. It's two separate, independent dwellings on one single-family lot. How did we get here? How did we have a, a building, a completed building in the ground with no special permit when the order says that he needs to have it? The accessory in-law apartment shall not change the single-family characteristics of the dwelling. It clearly has. To say it hasn't is ludicrous. The, the accessory in-law apartment, this is from the, the special permit that was granted for the first in-law apartment. The accessory in-law apartment shall revert back to a single-family residence at the change of ownership or primary, or, or the primary family marriage made out of circumstances. It can't. This can never revert back to a single-family home. How can it? This, this special permit for an accessory in-law apartment may be subject to recall if any complaints from the abutters. We're the abutters. We're complaining. We're telling you it's unacceptable. And that's pretty much all I have. Those are the facts. That's what I have to look at every day I walk out, my daughter's going to work, there's two, other two family on the other side of my house. My point is I'm 100% against the granting of this permit.
Thank you.
Are there any other abutters who'd like to speak?
No, no. I, thank you for letting me come up. I have nothing...
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Christopher John Santa Swatso, 85, Seven Star Road, Groveland, Mass., 11294041.
You lost me at, at John.
I, I've got nothing against Mr. Stokes at all or anything. What, what, what I see and, and it's disturbing to me, maybe it'll never happen, but I moved out of Everett. I, I grew up in East Boston and I seen the big buildings and everything and the families that come in. I moved out, I built a brand-new house in Everett. I had to move. Why did I move? When, when they had a, one family across the street, they went in a nursing home, then before you know it, you had 10 families in there. Oh, four families, or three families. Well, it's against the law, but the town couldn't do anything about it because of this and that. My contention, we give, we gave, I'm, I'm 83. Pretty soon, I don't know how much time I got left, I'm from day to day. I, we gave the house, we put in the daughter's name. She's gonna inherit and live there when I die. Okay, so I'm saying to myself, "Well, you take the house, Mr. Stokes, they getting older in age. They, they may wanna move into a nursing home, 55 and over, whatever." Now I'm saying, "Well, then their kids may not want it and they'll sell it." Well, now you've got yourself, ah, the high-rise apartment buildings right there, which is how many bedrooms and how many units. Well, you get one family in and that family brings in 10 more. So you, you're creating an atmosphere, yet there's nothing wrong today, it's tomorrow and the next day. That's all I worry about. And that's all I get to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this gentleman wanted to speak and then come back.
How you doing? My name's Don Murray, I live at 89 Seventh Star Road, right across the street from John. I find no problem with the house myself. I think it looks great. He's got one of the best properties in the neighborhood and because you have different roof lines, does that, that's not a regulation. As long as, everything I've heard tonight, they've gone before the board, they've got everything they're supposed to have. Granted, they didn't like the way it went, but they've got all the permits and everything and I think they're doing a good job at it, so I don't see, you know, you guys know the rules and regulations. If everything is done right, then I don't see why it wouldn't pass. And if it's not done right, it won't pass. So I think it's just up to you guys to make the decision on what it's gonna be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Just to add something. You'd asked earlier...
Could you state your name again?
I'm sorry. John McNeil. You'd asked earlier, what are you trying to, what are we looking for, a cure? Depends on what you're trying to cure. Right now, we feel the viol, the process has been violated. We feel that we are on the receiving end of a raw deal. So how do you cure that? Do you allow somebody who didn't follow the process to build this, continue to build what he's building out back that's gonna affect our property values, that's gonna affect our daily lives? I've already had, Donahues are actually talking about doing the same thing as I did, putting up arborvitres, but they take several years to grow to a respectable height. Or are you sitting back saying, "Okay, well, we'll reward the Stokes by letting them keep what they have there so long as they do certain things to meet our standards"? I don't believe in rewarding bad behavior. There's a process, we have rules, you people are here for a reason, to make sure that the zoning bylaws in town are observed, like every other department in town. Because if this is allowed, where do you stop? Who else can put whatever they want to in their backyard and say, "Well, jeez, my mail wasn't stamped correctly, but I've already spent X amount of dollars doing this, so you let Stokes do it, you gotta let me do it." And again, I'll go back to my earlier point. He could've stopped. He could've limited his progress on his house when he was served. He chose not to. He chose to double down. Let me speed up my work. Let me go as fast as I can so I can get this buttoned up so when it goes to the board, not in November, when it could've come before the board, but in December, when it's all buttoned up, when the new siding is on, the old building and the new building, when it's graded and everything is good, let me go to the board then. Let's prevent somebody else from doing the exact same thing. It's not the old days of Groveland. At least I'm hoping it's not the old days of Groveland where the joke was, "It's Groveland, who cares? You can get away with anything." I've said it, he said it, we've said it to each other over the years. I'm hoping that's changed. Because if it hasn't, what do you draw the line?
Thank you. Uh, yes.
In July, before one mail was put in, Mr. Stokes had three permits. He had approval from the conservation, he had the zoning board, and he had a building permit. He went before all three and then the mails went in. So to say that he did not follow the law, did not follow the town procedures is just, is just factually wrong, is just factually incorrect. And lastly, just, just two points. We're here tonight on a special permit for an accessory use, an in-law apartment. Let's assume for a minute, this is not an in-law apartment. Would this structure still be allowed to be built? The answer is yes. There's nothing wrong with this building as it stands right now. This, it meets all code, it meets building, it meets conservation, it meets every single element, so it can still, it can still be built, it can still be stamped. We're here tonight only to ask for a special permit under the 7.1, the accessory bylaw for an in-law. And if we, number one, if it can be built anyway, but number two, if it meets everything reported to a registered architect and, and we've gone through all of, the whole town, then I believe that we do comply with, with the 7.1.
Okay. Is there, um, sorry, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Is there, please come up.
I'm Del Deviazo, I'm under the Stokeses.
Sorry, can you, you gotta talk into the microphone?
My name's Del Deviazo, I live in Ames Gray, I'm the Stokeses' architect.
Okay.
My first thing I'd like to say is, um, ugly is subjective. People design and build things according to their own aesthetic and people have different aesthetics, so for one person to call another person's house ugly is, in my opinion, taking it beyond the scope of this meeting. Architecture in New England is known to have multiple roof lines. It is known through history that buildings in New England were, were initially started with one small building and then added on to over the years as the families grew or as the changes of the building came, or as changes in the building were needed. So again, multiple roof lines are not unusual and actually they are a very strong driving force in the aesthetic of a, of New England architecture. So that's another argument that I would differ with. I, I have no input on the permitting process and the, and the process before the board. I'm just here to comment on the physical aspects of the building. There's one other fact that was misstated that I heard and was the total square footage. The original, the numbers for both of the units were correct, however, there's an overlap in the two numbers, so the 1,500 square foot number is incorrect. That's the only other point that I'd like to make.
So it would be 15, that, that total number minus the second floor of the, the current...
The first floor of the existing unit is being called twice in that number.
Yeah, right, okay. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Deviazo.
Yes.
Is this your rendering?
Yes.
And that's your stamp?
Yes.
And a registered architect?
Yes.
Do you stand behind those numbers?
The square foot numbers?
Yes.
Square foot numbers are very precise and they're based on a copy of the zoning regulations that I was given to perform from.
Were those the latest ones as, as adopted earlier this year?
Yes.
The most current?
Yes.
What's the date on that plan?
It's November 6, 2017.
Okay, so, six, yeah.
One other point would be for the purposes of this board to consider, there are modifications that can be made to the physical design of that building that can resolve some of the issues that have been brought up here today.
Could you give some examples?
Can I ask a question?
After, after I answer, that's mine. Such as?
Tying the two units together into one, into... Tying the two units together into one, into US unit.
Tying?
We have an idea about how to combine, how to connect the two buildings together on both levels.
Meaning, the wing out the back to the existing family structure, single-family structure?
Well.
I don't think we need to get into specifics. I was just curious what you're talking about.
Like I'm saying, there are solutions to some of these issues, these physical issues that have been brought up.
Okay. Dan?
I wanted to address those physical issues. You heard the opposing counsel, I guess, there, state that there were more than one egress? And there were, that the amounts that you've excluded for lavatory, for instance, bathrooms should be included. What's your position on that?
The inclusions and the exclusions were done according to the regulation. I don't recall, I don't have it in my memory, but if I went back and analyzed each one of those points, that's the way it was calculated.
Even if you include the bath, the laundry, and the hallway, you're still under the nine-hundred. So, it's more a question of the closets and stairway.
Mr. Stokes, what I'd like to see, and I don't think we have it here, I'd like to see a copy of the building plans that Sam Jocelyn approved. Because I think it's relevant. Because the stop order, and it looks, you know, looks like a, you know, go to the ZBA. That's what it says, okay, for a special permit. So, what I need to determine is whether or not the building permit was invalidated solely on a use issue or whether or not it was on a, you know, for another reason. If, 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 as the applicant's attorney states, that regardless of the use, it would still be the building code requirements for an expansion of a single-family dwelling, then that would be more than an inference, you know, to be that the sole issue before us is in-law usage. Okay? And before I could draw our conclusion on it, I wanna make sure that the permit was proper. I've heard that it wasn't, but I also heard contradictory, apologize, sorry, I don't know your name, you know, but I think you believe that Sam Jocelyn said something, and he's not here, and it would be helpful if he was here, in my opinion, whether or not that permit was granted under all existing building codes and all existing bylaws. If he granted that, and suppose, for the here and now, that that permit was proper for the expansion of that property as a single-family dwelling, okay? Then, to me, that would dispose of many, if not all, of the arguments as to whether or not the foundation is proper, whether or not it juts out, whether or not the roof lines are proper or not. So, you know, I don't, to me, I need that information, you know? Because there's more than one issue going on here. One is the use as an in-law apartment, and then there's whether or not this building permit is valid. And I don't see that stop order necessarily. It's not clear to me. It was handwritten, I'm not gonna judge here, but a little more color commentary would've been helpful as an advisory, you know, for me, to act on that, that are we just here on in-law usage versus, you know? No, the foundation shouldn't have been this size. It was too big, for whatever reason. There's no clarity on it. There's no detail on that. So, I'd like to see the building permit that Sam Jocelyn approved, because, you know, I saw, you know, the permit, it says excavation, what does it say, foundation?
Excavation, footing, foundation, rough line.
June nineteenth.
So, without a court order saying that permit was invalid or somehow defective on its face, I'm gonna rely on that as a valid document absent a court order to the contrary, that it's non-binding. So, at this point, I have to assume that's a binding permit. It's valid. It hasn't been invalidated. Now, we're here on an in-law application, or, as the judge wrote, an abandonment of the in-law. So, to me, that's a solid, you know, the narrow issue is usage. And, you know, I've heard the issue, you know, and I'm not a good old boy. Anybody who knows me, I'm the antithesis of a good old boy. I actually lived in East Boston, as you say, on Everett Street. It's funny you mention those, right behind the Immaculate Conception Church. I lived there in the early nineties, whatever that's worth. And I moved here because of the, you know, it's a beautiful town, and we wanna preserve the nature of it. So, you know, I understand, I understand the objections. My issue is to get this right under the law. There are monetary issues. There's always economics involved as to what's built behind you next year and front of you. It's always an issue. So, but the applicants before us, we have to show them respect and apply the law right. And it has to be, in my opinion, I like to get it right. I have pride in what I do. I'm an attorney, you know, and I don't like any of my decisions flipped, all right? I don't like boomerangs. I like to say, I got it right, you know? It held muster at a higher authority. So, I take pride in that. So, that's what I wanna get right here. And I think I need to know whether or not the underpinnings of this, whether or not that underlying building permit was valid or invalid, because I think the decision of this board hinges upon that as to whether or not, you know, that was a valid, existing addition to the single-family home. And then, we can take that second step. Without that, we don't have a proper foundation, in my opinion, to make that, make that decision as to whether or not it was a, we need to know if it was valid or invalid addition.
The building permit stands, it stands, but I also have a couple of plans.
You have the plans. I thought you said you didn't have.
I have, I'm back in my food, Chris.
Okay, so, I guess we go another round, if that's okay with the chairman here. I don't know. And I'm not a good old boy, for the record. I don't, I think the board, all due respect, I mean, I gave up Celtics tickets to come here tonight, so, I mean, you know? I try to serve the public, and this is a volunteer position, so.
Did you say that last one?
I got to see. But anyway, but the point is, you know, we're all trying to get this right. I hope you can appreciate that, people.
I think that, yes, let's look at the plans, just to answer those questions. And hopefully, we can answer those questions. We may not be able to.
I would actually like to make a suggestion that potentially, if we continue to get Sam Jocelyn here, because there's been a lot of representations, both sides, of what Mr. Jocelyn has said or hasn't said, or what procedure was met or wasn't met. And it's, of course, the first position, and my position being in court that day, that Mr. Jocelyn was on, giving court, and said, everybody, I made a mistake. That was not a correct building permit. And Amber Odey actually told my clients today, on the back of the original building permit, it says, you must go before the ZBA, before starting work. So, we need to look at those documents. And if we don't have them tonight, I don't think we have the whole record.
We need to get that back.
And I also have a couple of questions to Mr. De Vasio as well, if you guys know.
It's Deviazzo.
Deviazzo.
Let's start with looking at the plans.
There's been several sets of plans. There's no way for us to know if this is one that Mr. Jocelyn has in his records, because there were no plans submitted in the first zoning hearing. They're not gonna be date stamped by the board.
Do you have the building permit application naming the plans that were, and with the date of the plans?
I have a plan that's due the last twenty-ninth.
So, we don't know if that was the final version?
Madam Chair, I think we need a complete file.
I agree. What I would like to do is to take any other public comment that there might be, if there's any new comments, that is, I'd like to hear them. And then, I think we might have some more questions. But I think we are looking to continue to flush out some of the missing pieces. But I'd like to, you know, for that continuation to be the most productive it can be and to not, you know, have anything else come up next time. So, if there are any additional comments?
The only question.
If you could come up to the microphone, I'll pick you up.
The only question I had for the architect was, whom provided him with the bylaws and told him where to look as far as what you were allowed to back out of the square footage? Miss Stokes, okay. So, she, were you told by your attorney which, how to back out these, or which areas you could back out?
No, we actually came in before the zoning board and met with Sam Jocelyn, November first.
Of twenty sixteen?
No, twenty seventeen. Because we wanted to make sure that we were using the appropriate language and that everything, that everybody was willing to read. So, because there was a, two different places in the Groveland zoning bylaws stating different things that could be excluded, Sam said that in a case like that, when it is, when there's two different things and it's very unclear, he always refers back to the Massachusetts Building Code, which we have the copy of, and that is what we took it from.
And you can see why our clients are very concerned, because specifically in section seven-point-one of accessory apartments, it specifically outlines exactly what you're allowed to back out for accessory apartment use size.
That's correct.
Which does not include the majority of the items that are in the living space for single-family homes that you're allowed to back out in the definition section.
Right, and he said.
Okay, so, there's a difference specifically that was drafted for these uses. So, and that is not what Mr.?
The other thing. In our apartments, for accessory apartments, Sam said that that's a work in progress, and you didn't get all the work done last year for the verbiage for what was gonna be cutouts, for exclusion. And he said, because of that, he went back to the mass building code.
I think we have to apply the bylaws that are in place today. So, just for the record.
Madam Chair.
If she could finish, thank you.
Again, Mr. De Vasio, was you?
Deviazzo.
Sorry, Devia, I believe that counsel, whoever, Richard, wrote your affidavit, spelled it wrong, De Vasio. Mr. Deviazzo, in his affidavit, was applying the definitions in the back of the section that which applied to single-family homes, when he calculated square footage.
Dan, did you have a question?
Well, I wanna make, you know, a statement. I mean, Sam, the building inspector was before us, was the last meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
Our new bylaws have some ambiguities in them, okay? And it was acknowledged, I used to be on the board of Selectman Houston, but it was acknowledged that there would be some patches in the future to correct some of the, I guess nuances, for lack of a better word, within our recently adopted bylaws, okay? It was the first round. It hadn't been done in years. So, there are some differences between verbiage and definition. And where there are ambiguities, where there's plausibly more than one interpretation, I mean, that's the definition of ambiguity to a more, to a more interpretations of the same word or sentence or phrase. So, it, we discussed this whether or not, at the last meeting, whether or not the dimensions went to the exterior side of the wall or the interior side of the wall. Well, you can read it both ways and come up with two different answers. So, the absence of clarity on that in the patch, which, you know, we need annual town meeting to rectify and approve or disapprove, the building inspector, and I think at the last meeting, we took the position that we'll default to the state building code, okay? So, again, if that doesn't work to your advantage, then you take the opposite side. That's just the way it works, you know, arguing for or against something. So, I think we absolutely need Sam Jocelyn before us. We need a continuance. But, just to clarify, you could, you'll come up with different definitions and interpretations in our existing bylaw. It's acknowledged. But, but there's some wiggle room there. Let's just say that the bathroom should be excluded, all right? For the sake of argument, if the architect and they're willing to modify their dimensions on that, right? They may be able to do that.
Sure, and just to address, to approach the point.
It may not be, it may not, it may not be fatal to their application, is what I'm saying.
Sure.
There might be some wiggle room if you're, for instance, if you're off twenty feet. If they're willing to move the line to come under that, you know, threshold, then, you know, that's part of a given play here, and that's within the discretion and the authority of this board.
All right, just to adjust that one comment, I know we're getting late, is that if this structure was gonna be allowed as a single-family home, it would not be allowed as it's laid out right now. Because if you had two kitchens, two laundry rooms, separate bedrooms, walk-in closets, you'd be creating a two-family home within a single residence.
That's not before us.
Again, it's not before.
That's not before us.
But it's a point, Dan, that you made yourself, that this potentially could be a structure, but it couldn't, not in this plan, okay? Not in the plan that they've laid out today for an accessory use. And these are the only applications we should be talking about. If it was an abandoned accessory use structure, then all of that should have been, should be gutted, and it should be used as an additional part of that single-family home. Again, it's not before us today, so we don't have to talk about this, but I'm just trying to make the point that it would not, it may be in the structure, it might be allowed as an addition to the single-family home, but not in these uses, without an accessory apartment use permit, okay? And then, the last point that needed to be made was with regards to connecting the accessory apartment and making the change that the second floor of the original in-law to the main home. We're talking that that was supposed to be shut down for cold storage. So, now, we're gonna have a walkway through cold storage to get into the main home? It just seems like a highly unlikely.
My understanding was that the in-law apartment would no longer connect to the upstairs. Is that?
No, that's, he was saying.
There'll be a door there, okay?
Be a door at the bottom of the stairs.
So, the door, so you can walk through, you can walk from the in-law through the cold storage into the new? Once, if it were constructed? I got it, thank you.
If that's, if you do connect that to the main house, is there a reason to keep it cold storage? Why not just make it level space for the main house?
That's what we're trying, is to give it to the main house. I don't want it.
Or get rid of, I don't know if it would've been cheaper actually building a connection or just getting rid of that second story, but.
Okay.
Can I say one last thing?
Is it a new comment? Sir, you have to come up and speak in the phone.
Attorney Caruso asked the question earlier, if everything had met certain standards, would this building still be standing? I don't think that's the question. We were deprived the process. We were not given the opportunity to voice our concerns over this building coming up. So, my question is, had this gone, the way that the last hearing went with Mr. Lynch and the people that he was representing, had we had the opportunity at that stage of the game, as we should've had, as it states that he's getting a special permit, has to go before the zoning board, had we all come in here with an attorney, with four members of the neighborhood, two director butters, would that building even be standing? I don't think it would've. That's my question. My question is, if how do I make this conform to some sort of Groveland standard? It's up, let's let the guy keep it. My question is, the guy backdoored the system, why are we rewarding him?
We didn't backdoor. I don't like, you can't keep saying that.
That's my question. I was denied, I was denied the process.
I think we've heard your point, and I appreciate it. Thank you. We need to talk about that. Is there anything else that the board would like to see from the applicant before we continue so that we can ask them to present, you know, a complete application?
I'd like to see, we've heard a lot about lack of due process and being, we've heard, at this point, and I listen to people, but without documents in front of me, it's conjecture. So, let's get the facts, because bad facts make bad decisions routinely. Let's get good facts in front of us to make our decision. Like to see the conservation board documents, the planning board documents, the building. I'd like to see a complete file. Because that will dispose of any conjecture about, he said, she said. I'd like to build an inspector in here. If we have to get Mike Dempsey to come in here, we'll invite everyone, okay? But I'm sitting here listening to say everything was done improperly, or some things were done improperly, and I don't have any evidence before.
and I don't have any evidence before me that things were done improperly. I saw the building permit there, it says foundation, it says excavation work. The stop order from the judge doesn't say that the building permit was illegal, it does not. They just need a special permit for the in-law, status.
Do you want us to get the building apartment and the Concom's files and submit them to the zoning board?
Or-
Uh, if you-
Do you want them before you, before you beat?
I think-
They're public records.
I, I would like to see them, because, I mean-
Yeah, I think we would like to review them.
So we'll ask the, we'll ask the building and Concom to submit to the ZVA the files that they have.
I like to do my homework ahead of time, so I'm not coming in here cold. Some of these things are technical in nature, require a little bit of research. I like to, you know, look things up. Can't always do it on the fly, sitting in front of people.
So we'll get to the, before the meeting, try to get those in the next 10 days.
That'd be-
All relevant, because what, the way I say it, what's not before us will not be considered. If it's not in front of us, the weight of the evidence is zero, or close to it.
The file from the building and file from Concom will be submitted to the ZVA in the next ten days.
Is there anything else that?
I, yeah, I have something else I'd like to see, but it's mostly actually internally. So I'd like to see the original application for the original in-law apartment, and any plans that may have been submitted with that. So we can review that, plus the new application. Plus, if there's any copies of any of the documents that were submitted here tonight, you know, things like the decision from the court, copy of the building permit. Because it's a lot of, we do a lot of research ahead of time, but when you just handed stuff, it's like, gets a little, I would like to be able to read it, understand it, comprehend it, and think about it. So anything that was submitted by either attorney? Anything else I'm missing?
And follow-
Before we have?
What, what about the pleadings? Because again, I'm hearing sound bites of a spirit call case. So that stop order, if that's what it is, appears to be, with some exceptions, to wrap the envelope, the water out, et cetera, you know. What are the underlying, what were the underlying pleadings? What, what was that an answer to, is what I'd like? I don't know what the pleadings or the question was that, that prompted that response from the court. So I, I get the result, I don't know what the input was, I have the output.
Sam came in and said it was a mistake that I gave him. So that's, that blew the hearing that day. I went in with a valid building permit saying, I'm going home. Sam comes in and says, yes, I signed it, but it's wrong. Everything stopped dead in the courtroom. It was that day.
Do you, do you have copies of the pleadings?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so could you provide copies of what was submitted?
But what exactly was it wrong? Was it the requirement of a special permit for in-law usage? Or was it he wrong in issuing the, the building permit to construct anything?
He was wrong because we had to come before the board. People know, we could try to, and so we agreed to come before the board. That was, so when you have a building permit, and you have the authorization from the ZVA, and you have the Concom, we start to build. We had, we thought we had valid documents, and we did, up until, I'm telling you, that day when Sam walked in, and he said, I have to tell you, Attorney Caruso, yesterday, town council said that I, I made a mistake when I issued a building permit. So I had to stop dead, I had an argument, I, my arguments dead in the water. So we had to come before the ZVA, and that's why we're here now.
And that's the relief, the remedy for the inductive relief?
Was that building permit appealed within the timely period?
No.
Was, was it, was it 10 or 20 days, was it, was it?
It was four, three and a half months. Yeah, that was when my argument was before the judge.
Because there's, there's never a case on that, there's a-
Oh, yeah, that's my argument.
It does require-
This is the one that we go down every time we come in one of these cases, it's not the issue. The building permit should never have been issued.
Well, that's, that's your position.
That's because these people, the butters deserve to be able to come before the board, as was expected if there was going to be any extension alterations-
Understood.
On the old permit.
I think we, we've covered that, and it, you know, that case requires notice of the building permit, you know, actual notice, so-
There shouldn't be a building permit without a special permit.
Shouldn't be issued, based on the original permit, right?
No, you don't, that's the-
No, but the case that requires you to-
Was it O'Connor v., what is it?
Gal, I'm thinking Gallivan.
I'm thinking O'Connor. I'll look it up, I'll provide it to you.
I'm not saying they have to provide notice of the building.
SJC lacks jurisdiction to-
I'm an attorney too, it's only an appeal if you have notice. We didn't have notice until after, once the foundation was in.
But again-
That's when we moved-
You don't need notice for building permits. Every building permit that's issued by the building department does not go to anybody.
No, no, no.
It's not, it's not required to be served on a board, or something.
According to your own town checklist, if a special permit is required before the building permit should issue, there would be notice. And that's what these people being educated-
We have covered, we have covered this?
Exactly, so that's just-
We're, I would like to move this meeting on, please.
It's Anino versus O'Connor.
Okay, why don't you give me that case, Dan?
Look up the Anino case. Anino, A-N-N-I-N-O versus O'Connor, okay? SJC lacked jurisdiction to where there was an untimely appealed building permit, okay? If the underlying permit is valid-
It's not valid.
Then it's a usage issue, that's, that's where I'm at, unless you can convince me otherwise.
Well, the injunction was on the structure too, so.
Okay. Given the scope of what we're asking, and any volume of material, I'm expecting we'll come back for that, you know, it's going to be a lot of papers, and it's Christmas. Our next, our January meeting is January 3rd. Okay. We do keep the room-
Salt's are playing Cleveland that night. I'm not coming, I'm not coming.
We do keep the room the third Wednesday of the month as well, so the 17th, would that work for you? I just, I'm hesitant to push it just two weeks, because I don't think that we'll have enough time to, to, to get things done. The 17th.
Wait a minute, 17th of January, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking December, I'm like, that's a Sunday. Like, don't do that to me.
That's right, Julie, that we keep this room that third Wednesday. Okay.
Three.
Okay, great.
All right, after the call.
So 7:30, the 17th. Before we go, we do need a motion to continue the hearing. If you, just a moment, is it a question with testimony, or just a procedural question?
Yeah, it's a question related to the sentence, so I want to know, is this a stop work, or is that still in effect right now?
I can't speak to that.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah, yes, it is. So that's put on, it's going to come before you guys.
Yeah.
Before the ZVA, you have to make a decision. So we're not doing anything.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for a continuing, continuation of this public hearing to January 17th? I will make such a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue this application to January 17th at 7:30 PM.
Second?
All second.
All in favor? Hi, thank you very much for your time, we'll see you on the 17th. If you would submit things, if you can submit them electronically as well, they will get to us faster. Okay, okay, I didn't know if you have them, just to scan. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I keep this? I think that was yours.
Is that your question?
Oh, that's all right.
Okay.
As far as, what kind of contact?
No, we're good.
To Julie, please. Thank you. Thank you. Were these our plans, or?
Julie gave us these.
I would, would anybody mind if we took a five-minute break, just before the next hearing? So we'll, we'll come back in five minutes, I'm sorry, it's been a long night, I just need a drink of water.
I make a motion to recess, is that what we did? Yeah, I think we're already recessed.
Who's that, Cleveland?
Oh, you Cleveland.
Wait, Cleveland's doing it?
On January 3rd.
All right, so we do have another hearing, I feel like I don't, if you mind just moving it down.
We like it so much.
The hall, it's so fun.
Hey, Joel, have you received any applications for January all?
Yes, we surveyed them.
Okay. Right. That's what I'm wondering, is if we're going to just come out and go on the 17th, if we can. Well, we'll be videoing. We'll have to make sure there's video, Charlie. On the 17th, if we hear that we're going to do-
Yeah.
Well, but we need it, we need it recorded, because doing it on video, so that's what we're trying to figure out. If there'll be recording, then we can do minutes from that, or that's all.
Yeah, we need it recorded.
You mean, I can't, I can't go to a girl's school?
No, but she wants, right now she wants to be a physician assistant, but if she's-
You can turn it on, and leave and come back.
Yeah. Go that direction.
Yeah, there you go.
No.
Denise, Denise said the order of importance is selecting first, right? Zone and plan. Have to do row three, and if I don't, she yells at me.
Well, you don't want to get yelled at, do you?
Then I can go to the girl's best friend.
You ready?
I'm excited.
That's our, that's our family, with the Dan, not so.
You're fine with me. I thought you were fine.
I'm angry, mom, Charlie.
I'd rather be at the Celtics game.
As a candidate chair.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, are we back? We're back. Uh, you turn your mic on, so you can talk. Okay, so moving down the agenda, we're now to our third application, application 2017-11, oh, oh, we did that one. Application, don't have the number, 2017-12, made by Jan, is it Jana Fitzgerald? Could you come up? Reading the notice into the record, we have the legal notice of the Town of Groveland, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 6th, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the main meeting room of Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, under general law, chapter 48, as amended. For the application, 2017-12, made by Jana Fitzgerald, owner of the premises located at 18 Evergreen Lane, Groveland, plat 43 lot 8, in the R1 zone for a special permit for an accessory in-law apartment, according to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, including section 7.1. Read that one a couple times tonight. So, okay, you're Jana?
Yes.
That's our application. So could you tell us a little bit about what you're proposing?
Sure, my elderly mom shouldn't be on her own anymore, I have enough space for her, she can't do stairs, so for this big basement, that would be perfect, it's already walkout windows, and kind of simple little apartment for her, so I can check on her every day, cook for her, and take care of her.
Okay. And...
And it's in your existing basement?
It is, yeah, not buildings on at all.
So no neighbors?
No, I have my good friend and neighbor, and letters from neighbors, and everyone loves my mom and would be happy to have her. Good neighbors, thank God. Bless you.
So are you doing any exterior work?
Nothing.
To the structures, just building out the, the interior of the basement? Is it, is it finished at, at all now, it's just, okay. And looking at the square footage, it looks, I wrote it down somewhere.
It's not cut off. 650, I got through.
Oh, was it 650?
25 by 26, minus a common hallway, but-
Yeah.
Thereabouts.
Yes, 25 by 26 is what I was working on. Okay, so 60, you said it's 650?
Yeah.
What else are we supposed to ask, guys?
We've asked everything.
I know, so disoriented.
I know, me too. Septic, that's a big question. So you are on septic? Okay, so how many, what, can you tell me a little bit about the existing house? How many bedrooms you have, how big it, what the square foot?
Four bedrooms, I did, there's, you don't have a copy of my home?
I did, but I was, like, refreshing my memory.
That's okay, sure.
I did, I did read everything through, but I'm getting, we had three tonight, so I'm like, which one?
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms, that's right.
Two and a half baths.
And the current septic system is built for how many bedrooms?
Honestly, I don't know, I didn't know, I'd need to know that.
Well-
Do you have a whole bigger septic, probably 2,000? Yeah, 2,000.
Does anybody know the calculation for the bedrooms? Jason, do you know that value, for septic?
Might be able to look it up, but no, I don't.
No, just very simple.
Just so you, you know, you'll, you'll need to confirm with the Board of Health that you can have five bedrooms.
I just do that on my-
Yeah, well, well, Sam will need to know.
It was built relatively recently, so there's probably a septic plan-
Yeah, true.
Either with the town or whoever built it.
Right, because if, if you have a septic system that won't handle it-
Right.
You'll be the one who's sorry.
Well, I'm actually alone, my kids are off, and I'm divorced, so for me being the owner, it's not going to, but the best.
Is that a question of the actual use?
Right.
It's the, they do it by bedroom, and it actually is a gross overestimation of how much water gets used by bedroom, but it is the law.
Because you may not own it forever.
Right.
It's what is?
Double occupancy for every bedroom.
Yeah, it's like 10,000 gallons a day. Yeah, it's like 10,000 gallons a day per bedroom is some crazy number. Um, just so our, you know, our approval would be conditioned upon ensuring that the septic system was permitted for five bedrooms.
Okay.
And you, sorry, you're, you're going to be living in the, the rest of the house and continue to, to live there?
Yes.
While your mother's upstairs?
Yes.
And she does have an egress, right? You said it's a walkout basement out to the, is that?
The backyard?
It's out to the backyard, so this is like a garage, right?
That's my garage, yes.
Yeah.
You have the lock that's out back.
Dan, Jason, any questions?
No, I don't. I need you.
Um, any more questions, Kathy?
I'm just going through, because some, as I go through the application, I'll lots of times make notes and put my questions as I go along, so I'm just making sure I don't have anything else standing out.
It looks like you're set back pretty far from the street. I assume you have plenty of places to park.
She has a few, worth of driveway and an extra garage, because my kids are at college.
Yeah, I didn't have any other, um, it, honestly, to me, um, it seems pretty straightforward, but, um, so I, I think I'm good for questions, except septic, that's always a big problem, so.
If I had known, I would have looked, I just didn't know what to expect, and I.
I, I actually did look for, I remember doing it now, I was looking for it on the listing, because lots of times on the listing, they'll say, you know, it's approved for X amount, but there was nothing here. And it would be on a Title V report. I don't know the title. When you bought the house?
Yes.
They gave you a Title V report, and basically it certified the septic that it was included.
I say paperwork, so I might sound.
So you may have that, and you, if, if you have that, then that will tell you how many bedrooms you have.
Okay.
And that kind of stuff, so. Title V, yeah, titled, it actually looks like Title V.
Okay.
For the Roman numeral V.
Yep.
So if you find it, that's.
Okay, all right, I'll take a look.
Yeah, that would be important, before you go too far.
Okay.
Um, anyone else? Going once, twice?
She's fine.
Uh, so I'll close the public hearing on this matter, um, and, you know, I'll just go ahead and, um, I'll make a motion to approve the application, uh, 2017-12, for a special permit for an accessory in-law apartment uh, in the basement of the structure, uh, according to the application, uh, with a specific condition that it, um, that the septic must be designed to, to handle the added bedroom.
Right.
Okay. Second?
A second.
Second, Kathy, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry that we didn't, I wasn't thinking to take you first, so I. Oh, oh, I should. I forgot to ask if you all wanted to talk. I'm sorry, okay.
You get the short straw.
For the record, there are two letters, uh, supporting the application.
And a, and a.
Live, live person who is also.
No opposition.
No opposition.
11, Neil Rowley. Early morning. 11 Evergreen Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good night.
Thanks. Forgot what I was doing. Forgot about the public. Okay. We no longer have any publics, so.
We're no longer popular.
We can move on to the rest of our agenda.
Yes.
Uh, talking about the application form, and I, um, I haven't done anything to it. Sam, um, did approach the company that does the building permit electronically, and they would, um, be happy to help us do such a thing with our zoning application. Um, he was gonna reach, but he had tried to touch base with them a couple of times on pricing and exactly what that would look like. Um, he said with the end of the year, he thought that they were kind of in a crunch, and I said, no real hurry on that. Um, so that's still something that we can move forward with. I think ultimately, um, that might not be the user interface, because the user still has to hand a piece of paper to Town Clerk to stamp, because that's what 48 requires. Um, but it may be a backend for our administrative uses. I, I don't know yet exactly how it will work, but, um, it may, may in the future be a way to easily distribute, um, what the substance of the application is to the board members.
How do they fill that out, print it, hand it in, and then the rest, the, the extra copies get sent electronically?
It could, maybe, yeah. Um, so, yeah, what I'm trying to do is facilitate a way for us to get materials faster, um, and, and to kind of cut down on the paper a little bit, just for our cost purposes. I mean, even though the applicants are the ones who should be submitting all the copies, you know, we'd then have to mail it, and, you know, and anybody who wants paper should still get to have paper, because I, I like paper too, but, um.
I do for reviewing.
Yeah, we know, because I write things on it.
Especially with plans and stuff.
So you want me to keep on sending out? Because I was planning on doing it electronically, I was gonna scan them in. Um, but if you take a look at the last application that we tried.
You wanna grab one of those microphones, just? Sorry.
Take a look at the last application, it was pretty much not filled in correctly.
In what way?
She, she filled in appeal decision, build inspector variance, so, and.
Oh, did you change it?
I, I.
On this last one that we just had? The Fitzgerald? She's only got request for special permit checked on mine.
Right, but if you take a look at the inside, she looks like she filled out all three.
Oh, like, in all the questions?
So.
I think that's just not clear.
If, if they're gonna just fill out one part, it'd be just easy, really easy to scan the one or two pieces of paper in.
Well, we can also ask people to email, you know, to do it themselves and email a copy. And, and with the new application form, if we can make it a fillable PDF, then.
I've been working on that.
Okay.
By the way, so I, I'm pretty close to being able to do that, so.
Okay.
I, I think I got the, a plan for that.
So that way, like, you know, they can print it and, and get it stamped, but also can email it, and then you can just email it to us. And, I, I mean, I don't know.
Would you rather have it so that when I pick them up after they, they are date stamped from the Town Clerk? Did I just go in and I scan, I scan it in and just send it to you as a PDF?
I mean, I would like it, because I would like it to have them sooner rather than later, just so that we can coordinate the legal notices and to make sure that they're complete, you know, that kind of stuff. I, I don't know if other members of the board want them electronically or faster, I mean. Do you want applications further in advance than when you typically receive them? Or do you want them electronically, or do you like how they come to you?
I like them mailed to me. I come home, they're on my dining room table, and I'm like, oh, I got mail.
It is one of the most exciting things that happens.
I had a pretty dumb mind.
Yeah.
But anyways, no, I like the comic format, and, you know, if you give them a week in advance, it's decent. You know?
I usually mail them out when I mail out the emeritus letters.
So two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
For most of us, more than enough, but two of the three that was.
Yeah, I mean, there wasn't much in that application, it's just.
Let's just say that somebody files an incomplete application, and we get it two weeks in advance. I mean, we open it and say, hey, you didn't fill out page three, number 14.
Well, that's what I, I think.
And, hey, Julie, can you call them up and have them?
That seems to be, the front line of defense is Julie when she first looks at it and, and sees something. And then what I would like is to be able to get it, like, pretty quickly thereafter, so that I can also confirm and verify, and then, I mean.
But the problem with that is the time is ticking with, when it states stamp, so.
Yeah, that's why if, if they submitted it in an email as well, you could just shoot it off to me in that email, so I could see it right then, you know, basically the same time that they submit to Anne.
But if they supplement, you'd say there was a defective plot plan or something.
Yeah.
If they come in with it, it still doesn't, I don't think it would violate public notice rules, because it says the application is to do this, and, and, you know, as long as it's clear enough as to what the purpose of the application is, I think it's probably before, it's probably notice.
As long as they provide, you know, bring it here and show it, people to look at it and comment on it, yeah.
So it might help us, I don't know if it would help, uh, avoid it, uh, help, help us avoid a continuous, uh, this evening.
I don't think so.
Because of some issues that are a little more complicated. But on your, on your garden variety application, if there's, you know, where's your plot plan? I don't see it.
Right. Um, okay, so I, I think, so I'm hearing you say you don't want to receive things electronically, you want to keep them mailed to you. But you wouldn't object if I got them emailed, to, in order to review them beforehand.
You know, you know, gold foil, like, you know, ribbon on top.
Thanks.
But a lot of, a lot of it too is sometimes when they, um, mail, like, when they have their plans, I mean, how do you, I.
So their, their P is gonna have that, and, like, they can make that a PDF.
Okay.
Who's gonna do that?
Whoever drew them. The applicant.
Right.
They don't usually give you, they don't usually give you, um, a stick.
But we could ask.
Oh, no, I'm saying if they could, if they can email them.
If they scan that in, it'd be miniscule, I mean, I, I, I'll need stronger glasses, I mean, I'm not even kidding.
Well, and you can blow it up on your computer, is the thing.
Nah. For things where they have full architect plans, we can just mail the plans to, in addition to the electronic form.
Is there someplace on the application that you could mention something like that on there?
What, that, that plans would be attached?
Um, you know, that they put on, you know, put it on a, a stick for your, for us, or, you know, send us the PDF file.
Yeah, I, I think we can ask for all application materials to be submitted, email, I mean, I do it all the time with towns, you know, they want an email copy too, it's not like technically deficient under 48 if you don't do it, but it's just keeping, keeping everybody happy to, to, so that you can easily email it around, because that's how most people receive information these days, is. You're looking at me like.
I have to say, I.
I don't want to print out any of that, okay?
No, I'm not saying that you guys.
No, no, listen, for this, so.
When I was on another board, I used to have to print out 70 pages, like, okay, I need this, no, don't need it, 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 and it's.
I'm with, I like to have the, I do.
No, I, I like to rifle through it, it's like, this is irrelevant, yeah, I need that, no, I don't. I like to sift through things, and.
However. I don't object to you having a PDF to review immediately, I think that's a great idea.
And then we also keep all of the documents that are submitted with every application electronically in a file as well.
Correct.
So the papers don't get lost. You know, it's just another backup for making sure that we have everything for when.
And I do like the paper, because I like to be able to, like.
Because how much storage do you think I have on my computer? I don't have a whole lot.
Do we, I mean, there's gotta, I mean.
We don't, there's no computer up here for the zoning board.
Seriously?
No. Everything is on my computer.
How about a Dropbox? Of some sort.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know that, we need to figure that out.
I don't, still don't have any, just Dropbox.
We'll figure it out.
See. I, I like the status quo, I don't say that on everything, I like the status quo.
Yeah, but we gotta move into the 21st century a little bit, just in terms of.
I don't disagree, but when I actually, because I kind of do the same thing, I'll sit down with the whole envelope, and I'll just spread everything out.
Sunday morning coffee, this is what we do.
This is what I do, right, and same thing, and I like to be able to look at the plans and look at the application and go back and forth, you know, so it's hard to do that on a computer sometimes, I, it's just not the same for me.
I want to take your paper away from you guys, I totally get it. I just, you know, sometimes I'm thinking about things in a, at work, and I'm like, what did that application say? And it'd be awesome to have the ability to go into my email and look at it, so that I can.
Agree.
Respond to a question, um, you know, and literally every time I get home, I, everything goes out of my head, I forget until I'm on the train the next morning, say, I didn't look at that application. So, you know, it would just be helpful to, to have the option, to, to have it both in paper and electronically.
Agreed.
I would say if you are going to store them electronically, you have to be careful about where you do that.
In terms of?
In terms of security and.
Yeah, no, I think it should be in Town Hall, I don't, I, I don't think it should be on Julie's computer.
Third-party, you know, Dropbox, just a random account or anything like that.
No, I, yeah, um, I mean, I don't, we don't have any real.
So, I don't know what.
Private information of people, but it, you know, it, it's, it's town.
Every one of these has a copy of a check.
That's true.
Routing numbers, bank account numbers, yeah.
What the signature.
You don't want getting out on the internet.
Do you want me to not put that in there?
Yeah, we, we actually don't need it.
That's fine with me.
As long as you indicate that, I mean, it indicates on the front that the fee was paid, so.
Yeah, I don't need a copy of it either.
Okay, that's fine, that's one less piece of.
If you say they're paid, I'm good, like, I, I trust you. I figure you wouldn't send it if it, if they didn't pay for it, that's how I figure.
We wouldn't hear if they.
Unless you sanitized it and you whited it out or, or shoppied it, but that's more work, you know?
Yeah, no, I don't need that.
As long as someone signs off, it's the clerk, right, that says paid?
No, the tax, well, she stamps it.
Who says the fee was, 400 was paid? Who signs off on that?
Oh, the treasurer, the accounting office.
Okay, as long as we get some receipt that it was paid, we don't need to publicize somebody's bank account information.
The current, the current application has Anne writing, amount paid.
Paid on it or something?
Yeah, yeah, amount paid, there you go, yeah, I'm good with that.
On the new application, we can put a little per-town use box that says, be paid.
Yeah.
Check mark?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or initial.
Initials?
Initial.
Initials.
Treasurer initial it.
Right.
You know, the, the check shouldn't be Paul McRocker. What else is private? What do you think, uh?
Um, do you want, we were talking about phone numbers, have them email us instead of phone calling us?
Yes. Like I said, my phone number on there is wrong, so nobody's called me.
I want paper trail from that one.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. Um, and to be honest, and I should be doing this, my, my own advice that I haven't been following is, we probably all should set up a separate, uh, email account for CBA business, just because, I mean, it, it's up to you all, but it, all of the communications are public record. Keeping them separate from your personal emails, you know, it's not a bad idea. Two cents.
Email's a public record, but it doesn't mean they can get my whole, uh, you know.
Want to go through that process?
Can't get my whole Outlook file with all my attorney-client privileged documents.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to tell them what's privileged.
I'll go all the way up there, this is about waiving privilege on an email account.
Not saying you're waiving it, I'm saying it's gonna take you 100 hours to sort through it, that's all.
I'm with you. As, we could all have separate Gmail accounts.
That's what I'm saying, you can.
Unless the town be willing to give us.
What do you have mine down as, Julie? Just put, put me down.
What's that?
I think you're DJ Matty.
Oh, don't use that one anymore, use my, use my political one, which is.
Hey, everybody, you know.
McDonald for Groveland. A Gmail.
Well, if I, I, I haven't created one, so I don't know what it would be yet.
Okay.
So why don't we wait?
You can email it, but he can write his down, because I'm not gonna remember that.
All right.
I'll, I got your email, Julie, I'll update you, I'll get you a brand-new email, and you can like, you can put it on a billboard on one or something, you know?
And just, you know, link it to your phone, CD, you know?
We're getting punch.
In terms of time, yeah.
Do we have any billboards in town, or are they not allowed?
The, um, we left as an open question last month, uh, this, whether plans need to be stamped. I know, yeah, so I think the easiest way to deal with it, it would be to continue to leave it in the application as a requirement, but that it, it's wavable for applications that don't need it. That way you're covering, you know, the gas stations that come before us, that are gonna need stamped plans, but you can waive for the minor variance or, you know, addition, or like, you know, this last one where it's, there's no external structure, you know, we can waive that for her, or they, they can ask to have that waived.
Suggesting?
Yes.
Can we add some lingo in there that, and, and again, wavable in the discretion of the board, but also either a, a PE, a licensed, um, architect, or, or someone with a, a construction supervisor's license? So we've seen contractors come before us with small, um, additions or modifications, and I, I think most, uh, uh, most that I run across, uh, guys with a, a, a construction supervisor's, like contractor license can draw up a, a. Your, your basic, uh, your basic drawing on now what they want to, what they want to build.
That's fine.
You know, because they're going to do the work, so I think, in many ways, they're on the hook for it.
Right, and they're going to, they're going to be the ones to get the building permit too.
And they're on the hook for it.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
That's fine.
They have more at stake than worrying about what we do.
Yeah, if they say it's twenty feet and it's thirty feet, then, you know, they're on the hook. So, um.
So what you're saying is you want the stamp on it or you don't or?
Well, I would like stamped plans, but if there's something that's, um, for Matt, Dan's example of stairs that, you know, are very minor or ports or some, you know. Something that doesn't require full-on construction, if it's a use question, you know, that the applicant can request that the requirement be waived. And that would be just, you know, in their application saying, like, I'm not, I'm really not doing anything to the outside. I request that the, the board waive the, the requirement to have stamped plans. I provided a plot plan that had, you know, wherever and, you know.
Like I gave you an example before about a real-world experience I had where I needed a, a three-foot variance to put a, basically a fire ox in it.
Yep. So, I mean, I, I appreciate that there are those examples, um, but, but in terms of, I'd rather start with the requirement and waive it than not having the requirement and telling somebody who came in with like a huge building and said, oh, you didn't need stamped plans.
But.
Then we have to send them back and say, well, we want stamped plans. And then they can say, well, you don't, your bylaws don't require it, your, your rules and regs don't require it. I'm not going to provide it. It just, I think it's easier to.
Waive it than it is to explain it later.
Well, they can request the waiver and then put a brief explanation as to why it should be waived.
As why, exactly.
The addition's only going to be five thousand dollars. The stamped drawings would cost me five thousand dollars. It's cost prohibitive. You have enough information to make a good decision there.
Yeah.
This will work.
That sounds good to you?
I think so, but I'd like the supervisors or, yeah, a, a professional.
Somebody who's been trained to draw stuff.
Somebody in the trade or business that's an expert in the field.
Okay, all right, I will work on that. Let's talk about money in minutes. Um, so here's a copy of minutes if you guys didn't read them. There's another one for you. We've got a bunch of invoices for payment. Uh, first one is a reimbursement to Kathy Fransen, amount of thirty dollars for attending a workshop. It was, what, see, I always forget what it's called. It was MBPC, um, Roles and Responsibilities of Planning and Zoning Workshop. Was it good?
It was very exciting.
Yeah.
Riveting.
Riveting.
But actually, I did, there was a lot of good information. I have to say that. I, I don't want to be facetious, but.
Um, was there any tidbits that you would share?
Um, nothing specific. I did take notes and stuff, so, um, maybe some things I might share during the workshop, the zoning workshop.
Okay.
But, um, not necessarily public hearing yet.
Okay. Um, and then the second is a employee expense form payable to Julie House for twenty-seven seventy-eight for supplies and, um, for parking for attending a.
Court hearing.
Yeah, a court hearing. I signed them wrong place on your form. Still got it. And. Sorry, Julie, there's. Okay.
Mileage for parking. Mileage required for staples, dining staff, and mileage for going to court for warrants, and then the parking for court.
Okay.
No, not in the other one is Caesar receipt for supplies for the paper goods.
So this is supplies and your time, right?
That's supplies and my time.
Okay, and then this one is.
And this one is for one.
Parking, six fifty, okay, and that's and mileage.
And that's for mileage for one of the staples.
And then also sta, oh, mileage to staples. Sorry, so there's one employee expense form, total amount twenty-seven seventy-eight, which is parking for going to court and mileage for going to staples. And a bill payable to Julie House, um, for work done November first through December fifth. And a reimbursement staples, um, total amount four eighty-six seventy-seven. And a final bill payable, um, reimbursing, or payable to the Eagle Tribune for, um, notices for the November meeting and the December meeting for a total of eight eighty-three seventy-five.
No sign, that was right.
I don't think so.
That was mine, I can't do that one. Only the minutes.
So Julie, does Kathy have to sign this one that's her?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Oh, you sign?
I signed for you.
That's all right, I'll, I'll just sign above yours.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion on the employee expense reimbursement to Julie House, the amount of twenty-seven seventy-eight?
Make a motion to approve invoice for Julie House.
Expense.
Expense sheet for twenty-seven seventy-eight.
I'll second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go on to that one.
Okay.
Um, and could I get a motion for, uh, approval of the employee expense form to reimburse Kathy Fransen for thirty dollars for attending the workshop? Jason would like to move. I will second it. Kathy probably shouldn't vote, but all in favor?
Oh, she should pay for it herself.
I offered it to you guys too.
Just because. I'm just kidding.
Do you vote in favor of?
Yeah, I vote in favor.
Okay, so three, oh, Kathy extends. Where did the rest of them go? All right, can I get a motion to pay bill dated December fifth, twenty-seventeen, to pay the Eagle Tribune eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents?
Motion to approve Eagle Tribune invoice for eight eighty-three seventy-five for legal notices.
I'll second.
Oh, Jason.
I got it. Hey, it's mine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All right, and motion to pay the bill dated December fifth, twenty-seventeen, uh, to pay Julie House for time worked and for reimbursing materials in the amount of four hundred and eighty-six seventy-seven.
Motion to approve invoice dated twelve, five, seventeen, for Julie, for reimbursement for supplies and for time for four hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
All, everybody. All right, um, did anybody have any comments on the minutes?
No.
Didn't mention any of the brilliant points I brought up.
It's up to you to put them back in if you are excluded.
Can't remember everything, Dan, sorry.
I'm sorry, Julie, that wasn't a dig on you. I'm just tired, and you know how I get when I'm tired.
Yeah. Um, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Can we modify those?
Uh, yeah.
In all seriousness, I like it on record that I objected to the stringent requirements of stamped drawings on every application.
All right, um.
But I think we've mooted that with modifications tonight.
Um, so there is a paragraph that says Bailey went over the new application. There was discussion regarding whether site plans should be required to be prepared by, by professionals. And then it says Bailey will be working on the application. In between those, would you like me to add McDonald strenuously objected to requiring stamped drawings?
On every application?
On every application.
Vehemently.
Strenuously or vehemently?
McDonald, McDonald objected to the requirement of stamped drawings on applications where deemed unnecessary.
McDonald objected to the requirement of stamped drawings on applications where deemed unnecessary?
Correct. I think that expresses my true sentiment.
And who decides?
It's always, it's in our discretion. It goes back to our discretion. If, if we need more information, we ask for it.
Yeah.
Do you have a signature on a second, on the second page?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can just fix it?
You can probably fix them against it to make it work.
No problem.
Um, are there any other edits to these minutes?
No, it was a great job, Julie. I didn't mean to, you know, get under your skin on that, sorry.
Um, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the November first, two thousand seventeen meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor? As amended?
As amended.
Sorry?
Aye.
All right, thanks, folks.
Okay. Anything anybody else wants to talk about?
How about adjournment? That's what I'd like to discuss.
I'd like that too.
What about this, okay, the, um, the packet that was, um, sent out for the, for the budget that I handed out to everybody?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so apparently she, this needs to be done by December twenty-ninth, I think she said?
Yeah. Uh, she had sent it to me, uh, in an email, I don't know, last week or something. Um, I don't, I don't know that it went to the rest of the board, but, um, so, um, I keep forgetting, but I will. I know you, you said you asked for the twenty eighteen numbers.
I emailed her. I emailed her.
Denise?
See, I emailed Denise last night.
Okay.
Um, if she could possibly send, uh, give me actually a high copy of the budget from last year.
Yeah.
Put it in our box so that way I would have it for tonight, but that didn't happen, so.
Okay, yeah, um, so it would be very helpful to see what this is supposed to look like, um, the numbers from last year to base our, our ask for next year on, but, um, certainly if, uh, anybody has any, uh, thoughts or ideas or questions, um, I, I know we haven't read this yet and since the budget's due before we next meet, I'm not sure what, what more we can do, but if you have something specific, you can contact me directly. And I, I'll take responsibility for preparing the budget as I think was intended by Denise with the email. Sound good?
You can do the budget.
I can barely add, so I don't know, but we'll try.
Dan, you should do it.
No. I don't do any accounting work, uh, once I leave my office.
Okay.
Could we entertain, I know we spoke about this before, but can we entertain maybe, um, having the, um, the applicants send out the letters and do in the newspaper? Can we entertain that again?
Sure.
Do, were we going to look for a town that, that did that? Didn't you mention that?
Was I going to do homework? I never did it.
You did my homework. Because the Conservation Board, they do it.
Well, yeah, because that's, conservation, um, under the Wetlands Protection Act, it's the applicant has the obligation to send the notices, whereas under forty-eight, the town has the obligation to send it. So it is, it's not exactly the same thing, but certainly for the legal notice, um, I've got a town right now that, you know, I'm, I'm signing a form that says, please send me the bill for the, the legal notice. Like, I promise I'll pay it. Um, so as, I assume that the Eagle Tribune does, uh, notices for a number of towns and, and maybe has, you know, dealt with this practice before, so, um, it might be, but, I mean, you're regularly in contact with the legal notice department there, um, to see if, if that's something that they are okay with. That, that they would bill the applicant directly and with, with us requiring that the applicant signs something that says that they acknowledge that they owe, they will owe money to the Eagle Tribune. That, that would be kind of step one to make sure that Eagle Tribune's willing to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can certainly find a form that will work for us. That's not a problem at all. In terms of, I was actually, I mean, I know some towns do make applicants send the notices. Um, I was kind of thinking that there was, um, a way to make this actually just easier for our process. You know, the, the, all you're sending is that legal notice and, um, if we could figure out, like, um, they have those postcards, right, that are preemptive of stamps. And like, if you could make the legal notice fit onto the size of a, like a.
Postcard?
Label to, to put on, you know, stick it on postcard with the, the address, you know, label address. The stuffing envelopes and licking envelopes and putting on stamps is just a little bit of process time. Um, and I don't, it's crazy, but I don't, I don't know what a, kind of, electronic application or equipment we have in town hall, but there is a way to just like feed postcard-type things through a printer. So you could just like print them and it would print them all out. Um, that might be step twelve, but, you know, it's something we could look into. So, I mean, basically, all you'd have to do is draft the legal notice and do a mail merge. It would print the address and print the, the legal notice and send it out by postcard. It'd be a little cheaper.
Do they have to be certified?
When the town sends them, we don't certify them. We typically only, if an applicant were to send notices, we would require certified so that they can prove that they sent it. Otherwise, you know, we don't, you know, they can say they did, but we don't know, whereas, you know, we know that we did it. It's a, you know, the postcards would be a little cheaper in terms of postage. It might just be a little quicker in terms of processing them. Stick out in your mailbox. Some people would see them. I don't know. Something we could look into.
Yeah, I like that, because I, I've, as everyone knows, I've never been a fan of having the applicants send legal notices. I just, I just don't like it. So, but, but if we were doing it on a postcard, that I could, I could do that.
It doesn't really save all that much, because we'd be saving the postage, but then Julie's going to go back through all of them and like look, make sure we got the certified label for each one and like, you know, that's time.
No, no, I, I'm not advocating that we send them certified. I'm just saying, I was wondering if she did.
If the applicant did it.
Yeah, that's right.
Then she would have to do it.
Right.
So, I, I kind of agree. I mean, I think the statute was drafted so that it is the town's responsibility to do it. And, and we have our fee set to cover that cost, so, you know, I don't think it's really that much of a burden on us, other than it's kind of a pain. Um, so trying to reduce the, the pain a little bit might be helpful.
What do you think of that, Julie?
What, using a postcard? Uh, I, then I, I don't know. I'd have to see if my printer could.
And we need, I mean, we need to figure out, like, how, how is this, that we really don't have any computer resources for the zoning board?
Up here?
Here, in town hall.
There's not, there's nothing up here. It has never been.
Does planning have a computer? Yeah, okay, so that's something that we'll be talking about in our budget class, because this is, I mean. this is, I mean.
Yeah, I agree.
I know we're relying on a volunteer board, but like, I mean, there's, the, the town has some ownership over this, um, in fact, a lot of ownership over this, so, um, I will look into what that, what that is.
One, one of the problems too is, I mean, even, even if it wa, if it was, they close at 5:00, I don't get out of work until 6:30 sometime, so.
Don't you typically come Monday night?
I, I try to get here on a Monday night.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I mean, if I, I mean, it's nice to ha, be able to do it home because I get home at 6:00 o'clock, at least I can go downstairs and I can jump on and do what I've got to do, whereas up here, it's up here, it's locked, I'm not going to be able to get up here, so.
Okay.
So there's pros and cons to it.
Yeah, no, I get you, um, but it's something we can look into to see if, if it's something that would, would work, or if we can figure out some other resource, but in the meantime, do you want to check in with the Eagle Tribune to see what, what that looks like? Anybody else want to go home?
Yes, please. Make a motion to adjourn, 10:25 PM.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we second that?
Aye.